It's six o'clock, so we will start our work sessions. Your call, please.
Council Hardman. Council Tysoe.
Here.
Council Galpin.
Here.
Council Ardeve.
Here.
Council Kaczemirski.
Here.
Council Braverman.
Here.
Mayor Menos.
Here.
All right, thank you. So we have CIS here today for a, is it annual harassment in Spanish?
Sure.
Thank you, Sharon. Take it away.
Great. Well, good evening, council. My name is Sharon Harris. I am a HR and organizational development consultant with CIS, City County Insurance Services, of which the city is part of the pool. So, going back in the eighties, Oregon, like many different states, passed legislature that cities and counties that were not self-insured could pool their resources. You know, because before that, you had to go out on the market to get your insurance, and it was very expensive. And so, in the eighties, our parent organizations, League of Oregon Cities, of which you're part of, and AOC for the counties, formed City County Insurance Services. And as a pool, you are with all the other cities and counties that are not self-insured. There's like three hundred and some odd of you that have pooled your resources, and so you share in the good times, you also share in the risk of when claims occur. I have been a public employee for a long time. I joined CIS ten years ago to do this exact thing, which is to go around the state of Oregon. I cover the whole entire state, and mostly, I train with staff, because I am on the employment side of CIS. So, I work with managers, HR, city quarters, supervisors, to try and help mitigate employment risks that may occur. But I've often come out and speak with city councilors like yourself. Why? Because you manage and employ, and you, there's a relationship down to the staff. And so, we like to train with the city council, because you have to know what some of the policies and procedures are that the staff must abide by. You need to know what happens if a staff member brings a concern or a complaint to you, a member of the elected body. There's guidelines, there's rules, what you do and what you don't do. And so, we like to give you the same training, well, a city council version, of the training that we do with staff. And we just got done with the training with staff. So, we like to, we like to train the whole collective body. So, thank you very much for coming. Before joining CIS ten years ago, I was with the city of Redmond. So, I actually live on the other side of the Cascades. I live on Tumalo between Bend and Redmond, where I was the assistant city manager for many, many moons. I was interim city manager a couple times. Could wait higher than that city manager, and so I could go back in to be an assistant city manager. And the only reason why I let you know is that I know what it's like to sit in their seat. I know what it's like to work for the city council. I did that for years. And so, I've been around to them, you know, I understand how conflicts happen, I understand how we all have different personalities and different backgrounds, and what's our why? You know, for you all, why did you run for city council? Usually because you have a passion for your community, and you want to serve. So, it's a great thing. But we also bring with us, to our seat, our perspectives, our biases, what we want. At the same time, staff have joined your organization for a reason, and they serve the community through their respective roles. So, this class is about harassment, discrimination, unconscious bias, so it's all about how we come to work, or how we approach. But you are not employed, so the rules are a little bit different for you, but they cross over. So, you're not about your biases. I think I kind of heard your names all checked off, but so I know who I'm speaking to. If you could quickly go around the room and introduce yourself to me, and let me know how long you have sat on council, Mayor.
Mayor Menos. Mayor, I've been on council two years now.
Okay, very good.
I'm Senator Galpin, and I've been on council for...
Right, okay. We get those repeats. How many times the first time?
Just first, a year.
Oh, okay.
And now, it's half a year.
Okay, very good.
I'm Jan Tysoe, and, let's see, I think I have now been on council about a year.
Good.
I'm Senator Ardeve. I've been on council one month.
Oh, a month, okay, very good.
Rachel Kaczemirski, also a month.
Hey, very good.
Hi, Jessica Braverman. Council one month.
John Hardman, council for two months.
Okay. So, rather new group. Okay, all right. Back here, do we have any other, no, just, okay. Members of the community. Excellent, all right. So, why are we here? Well, we're going to quickly go through this agenda this afternoon, again, as it relates to you as city councilors. We're going to talk about red light. This is the illegal conduct. This is a conduct that cannot happen in the workplace, and as city councilors, we have to make sure we are not committing this through the employment relationship as well. Yellow light, this is where I like to say we all kind of sit during the day. I call it our private radio station. It's our unconscious bias, it's our thoughts, it's our expressions, it's what we believe, it's what we like to say. You know, is it okay? Is it not okay? What's the big deal? So, we're going to talk about that, because this is the area that actually oftentimes is where claims start. It starts in these side comments, like it said, in these expressions that we use, thinking, you know, it's not that big of a deal, why would anybody react to what I said? That's just me, or that's just so-and-so, we should all excuse that person. Well, it's that kind of conduct that sometimes then crosses the line into the illegal conduct, and you're going to see why. Can we go through some of the categories? You're in Oregon. Oregon has a lot of protected classes, more so than the federal government. And then, green light, that's what we want our staff and everyone to work through, and we're going to talk a little bit about why that applies to city council. So, I'm sorry you have to look this way every once in a while. Oh, no, you got my work. Okay, I usually have my computer sitting right in front of me. So, there's legal reasons for taking this training. The organization, so the city of King City as an organization, is legally responsible for the actions of managers, staff, and the elected body when they are playing the role as city councilors, which, when you're a city councilor, your hat's pretty much on all the time. I know sometimes we're like, oh, I'm not acting as a city councilor right now. Like, really, you're not? Maybe you are, maybe you're not. Oftentimes, if we're talking about city business, you are, even if you may not be in a meeting. You might be at a barber shop, or you might be somewhere else. It crosses over. So, we are legally responsible for our actions. We are legally responsible for coworkers that behave sadly. Our job is to correct them. We will talk about that process. We are responsible for how we interact with staff, and how we interact with our community when we are wearing that hat. So, today's workforce, for people who train with me, I like to talk about our workforce from the standpoint that we are a mix of a lot of people. We are all unique individuals. There's not a single person in this room that is the same. There might be some commonalities, like maybe where you grew up, maybe the generation you grew up in, how you were raised, where you were raised. So, we might have some commonalities, but we have a lot of differences as well. And then, when you come together as a group, you're charged with getting along. You're charged with trying to reach the goals that you have set, and working through the staff. But sometimes, how we think, how we were trained, how we grew up, what our biases are, what our thoughts are, get in the way of the decision-making, because maybe we are going to what we want. You may have all gone for city council for your own personal reasons. Sometimes, people are like, I'm going to get on city council, because when I get on city council, I'm going to do best. And then, you get to city council, and you're like, oh, we're a collective body. I might raise that concern. But it's a collective approach. I don't get to just do because I am on city council. So, sometimes, we join city council because we have an issue or a concern, but then we realize, you know, we can bring up our issues and concerns, but in the collective body process, because that's what our charter says. But again, we might get there in a very different way. We might have our own thoughts. Some people are like, I like the way it was in 1982 around here. So, I grew up in Beaverton. I'm a baby boomer. I grew up in Beaverton, when Beaverton was suburbia of Portland. That was a long time ago. I go to Beaverton now, again, I live in central Oregon. That's where my husband and I raised our children. I come over here, and it's, wow, it's busy over here. Beaverton's huge. Even going down 99, oh my gosh, you know, it used to be farmland, right? I mean, I'm staying in a hotel where Beaverton and Hillsborough has come together. What happened to Aloha? You know, I mean, things have changed so much. So, if I was to have been raised now over here, I would have had a very different upbringing than when I was raised. When I got on that bus at, when I was nine years old, got to Zerborg to pick berries, you know, I mean, you just don't do that anymore. I certainly didn't do that for my children, right? So, we all have different experiences, life experiences. We approach our work in our way, and we approach our public service in our own unique way. So, I want you to think about that as we go through this training, because this training's really about, you know, how you might be able to try some of this on, how this might relate to you. How do you show up when you come to city council? How do you show up when you're communicating with members of the public, or members, the city manager, as it relates down to the staff? So, the role of the elected officials. You have a role when it comes to the employment side, and that is, you manage the city manager. That's your employee. You collectively manage the city manager. The city manager manages the staff. That's your charter. That's your form of government. So, oftentimes, especially in some of our smaller communities, I remember when I lived and worked for the city of Redmond, we only had like 12,000 population at the time. Now, it's like 30. Huge, Redmond's huge now. You know, everybody knew everybody, everybody grew up together, everybody still has neighbors, and it was very common for a city councilor just to go talk to an employee, or talk to a department yet, and just go have that conversation around the city manager. And, you know, for a while, that worked, until it didn't. Until the one time, the one situation happened, that blew it all up. Well, the fact of the matter is, we have to go back to our charter and say, what does our charter say? Our charter says that there's a process, and we have process so that everyone is playing from the same book of rules. So, the city manager manages the city manager, city manager manages the staff. If city council needs to learn something from a staff, it goes through the city manager to you all. That's why you have your city council meetings, that's why you have your staff reports, that's the tool that we use. And when we're all playing from that book, it usually runs quite well. So, keeping that in mind, who your employee is, what is red light workplace behavior, and why do city councilors, you need to know about this? Well, in the state of Oregon, we have a lot of what we call protected classes. Federal government has protected classes as well, but Oregon has way more. Okay, so, in the employment world, an employee cannot be discriminated against because of a protected class. So, maybe a protected class is their race, color of their skin, their religion, their national origins, where their family originates from, their age, pregnancy, gender, gender identity, sex, disability. In Oregon, there's veteran status. We have many protected classes, and what that means is that an employee cannot be discriminated because of, or an employment decision cannot happen as a result of. So, to hire someone, to fire, to promote, to not promote, it needs to be based on merit in doing the job, not based on a protected class. So, when we go to hire someone, we can't say, oh, we need those young kids, right out of college, they're our future. Well, that might be age discrimination, okay? Or we can't say, oh, don't bring any of those old people in anymore, you know, we have bad knees, bad backs, they're going to bring work complaints, and, you know, I mean, no. We need somebody right in the middle, who knows how to do the job, who knows how to come work, okay? That can't be the reason as to how we select staff. It must be based on the ability to do the job. But we have protected classes, both in the state of Oregon and in the federal government. For age, federal government says that age discrimination is 40. Oregon says we can do better than 18. Yeah, no, with 18, no. But 18 is the age where, you can type for yourself, you're an adult. Hold that conversation, but that's what it says, right? 18, you're an adult, which means, an employer, again, we cannot make employment decisions based on how old and how they are, any of this. We cannot, cannot how we make our decisions. Well, it's very important, because we get a lot of discrimination claims based on protected classes, okay? And they're usually not very obvious. They usually tell us. People start making comments about someone in a certain... This is a really old crap, in fact, it's 2014, so there's a lot of categories that are not up there. But I still need in my class to show how many categories there are. There are a lot of categories. There's protected classes, whom we are, race, national origin, age, religion, disability. And there's also protected activities, such as violating the work complaint. You cannot retaliate against an employee because they follow a work complaint. Or now, we have paid leave Oregon, because we're going to use paid leave Oregon. We have protections, or they call bullying, or the EEOC, or they call OSHA. That's all protected activity. We cannot go after an employee, or you, the council, can't tell the manager, you need to fire that guy, he's not a team player, that's not okay. We can't do that. These are all protections that have been passed for employment reasons. Okay, so I wanted to take a little bit of each of these, just to give a few examples. So, harassment can be a elected official or supervisor to an employee, an employee to an employee, a vendor of the most, a colleague to an employee. Always that harassment can happen. We can also have a member of the public harass an elected official. We can also have an employee harass an elected official. All these different ways that harassment can happen. The thing is, for you as an elected official, then you're not employed. So, if harassment is not with you, there's a different avenue for you, okay? Similarly. But for employees, they are protected. So, if the city councilor is harassing an employee, there is a claim there, and you will be held responsible for that claim, for acting, acting under position. So, that is again why I like to revisit our rules. We have rules because they help us guide. So, we have our charter. Our charter, did you go to city manager? Did you go to staff? We don't go around the city manager. How do you treat your city manager? You can't, just because you're elected officials, and nobody can fire you, because the public, harass in a discriminatory way your city manager. You don't get to do this, okay? So, there is, yes, there's freedom of speech, but there's also process under employment, all right? And we have guiding tools to help us do it. So, hostile work environment, have you heard that term? Well, employment, I speak to a lot of our members, and I get it all the calls all the time, I'm working in a hostile work environment! Well, there is a very specific legal definition for hostile work environment. Hostile work environment is when someone is being discriminated against because of one of those protected classes or protected activities. Someone is being treated differently because of their age, their disability, their race, their national origin, et cetera, et cetera, okay? And the conduct against them is severe and pervasive, okay? And it has happened to be usually more than once, so it's cumulative. Oftentimes, we get calls, and when we dissect this, we learn that maybe there's not illegal conduct going on, but it's a really bad workplace culture. And in today's world, this bad, icky, workplace, very professional word, very icky, this very toxic culture is creating an environment that people are not able to succeed. And when you have an environment where people are not able to succeed, you lose good people. In today's employment world, especially in government, it is beginning more and more challenging to get that qualified individual. Well, people, especially around here, they don't have to move to join another entity, they can just go to another opening. It's more of the members that I work with have positions that are open than they are fully stacked. And staff are paying attention to, what's the climate? What's the culture? What's going on internally? How are we being treated? Are the city council listening to us and asking for things in a reasonable way through my city manager? Or are they expecting us to know things that we, you know, haven't been asked yet? You know, how are we communicating? In today's workplace culture, I wouldn't say that it's delicate or sensitive, we don't use words like that, but it has changed. We have multi-generations working together, and our expectation of what the employment culture is very different for all of us. So, oftentimes, I find out that it's really not a good culture, and if it's not a good culture, we have to address that, because if it's not good, it just takes an employee to say, gee, you know, I think the really, the reason why I'm being treated this way? Did the other day in the break room, we were talking about religion, and I said I was a church sex Y V, and a priest said, really? Or a councilor found out that, and it was like, ever since then, I've been treated different. Employees decide. They fill the blank in, I think this is why I'm being treated this way, okay? So, again, it's about how we show up. How do we come to city council meetings? How do we conduct our business? How do we ask the city managers then to go forth and conduct the business that we have asked? Okay, racial harassment. So, racial harassment can come in many different forms. You know, there's some, maybe the more obvious ones, such as using a derogatory comment or a slur, but there's things that maybe aren't so obvious, like stereotyping. Many of us, depending on how we were raised, when we were raised, we might have stereotypes in our brains that we identify people who are different from us. Somebody who grew up in another country, or have a national origin. We might look at someone and go, oh, you look different from me, therefore, you must be from somewhere else, okay? We have stereotypes, and stereotypes often come out in the language that we use, and so we have to be aware of that, okay? Gender identity. We have sexual orientation as a protected class. That's been a protected class in Oregon since, oh gosh, way back like 2008, long time. Sexual orientation's been a protected class. Gender identity, that's a typo up there. That should be June of 2021. June of 2021, Oregon passed gender identity as its own protected class. Now, what does that mean? Gender identity is how somebody feels on the inside. So, you may be familiar with pronouns that people use today. Instead of he or she, they may use a plural pronoun, such as they, they're, them, they, they. So, an individual may say, I don't identify as the gender of my birth, therefore, I use a plural pronoun, and these are my pronouns. Or maybe they change their name to a non-gendered name. Okay, very good. People like to be called by their first name, so if somebody's changed their name, and they tell you what their name is, there we go, we move on. Discrimination for gender identity often comes when people purposefully will not use the pronoun of which the individual identifies by. So, how this is important to you as city councilors? Well, again, if you are working with the city manager or with staff, and there's a staff person who has said, these are my pronouns, and they're participating in the city council meeting, we use the appropriate pronouns, right? So, this gender identity. Gender expression might be how somebody expresses themselves. Again, maybe there's someone who dresses in a way that's not really the way you were raised in social norms. So, you know, as a society, most of us grew up with a dual-gender, you know, society, males and females, and if you were to go into a store, you know, clothes, identify as a female or a male. If I took my husband shopping with me at the Bend store, at the Macy's store in Bend, it's very, very tiny, I'm surprised it's still open. We always come back where the pots and pans are, and the men's department's like right there to the right, and that's where I drop him off. It's very small, and it's right there. And then, I have the rest of the store. You know, I've got clothes, I've got jewelry, I've got shoes, I'm going to be a while, so I drop him off there, because when he's done, there's also a chair, and then I come back through this store, and I can pick him up on my way out, okay? We don't throw all the clothes together and pick off one rack. No, we have everything separated. That's how we were raised. That's what our society has said. So, if you have an individual, maybe in your community, or on a commission, or a council, or maybe a neighboring community of which you work with, and someone identifies or expresses themselves in a different way, we may have a very strong bias against that, and it may come out in how we react, or participate, or interact with that individual. The fact of the matter is, if we are acting on behalf of the city, we govern as we do with everyone. We treat everyone with respect, and we get our business done, all right? So, it's a reason why we no longer have gender-specific dress codes, so we tell our entities, get rid of gender-specific dress codes. We still have dress codes, but it's just for everybody. It's just, you know, no shorts, shorts, or foot flops, or something like that. You don't say, males wear this, females wear this. We no longer gender-identify dress codes. Okay, so sexual harassment. So, hostile work environment can be sexual harassment, which may involve unwelcome sexual advances. It can be gender-based, non-gender-based, it can be asking for sexual favor, or it can just be jokes, inappropriate pictures, sexting during COVID. I think CIS, we thought all of the sexual harassment cases would go down, because nobody was working together. They were, oh, no, they just switched. We had, we had a female employee take a picture of her anatomy and send it to her male coworker with a little text that said, miss me much? It's like, okay, you can't do that. That is sexual harassment, you know, that is, that is a no-no. The thing about sexting is, the person who's doing the sexting might go, oh, shoot, and start deleting. Well, the receiver has it, there's the proof, it's right there. So, those claims are actually really easy for the plaintiff attorney, and as an employer, really hard to defend, like, stand, because there it is. But we just switched. So, again, depending on who you are, and how you were raised, and everything, you might be back in the world like I was, which was, you know, quick-progo sexual harassment, which was, you know, the person of power and the subordinate, you know, back in 1992, Anita Hill. You know, that was my first, you know, introduction to having to train on sexual harassment. That was a long time ago. Well, now, we have sexual harassment in so many different ways. From a counselor to a staff, inappropriate comments. We've had many councilors get in trouble by speaking to a member of the staff in an inappropriate way, thinking that they're funny. So, it is not. Again, it doesn't always have to be asking for sexual favor, it can just be inappropriate pictures, comments, emojis. Emojis? Pictures? So, you know, emojis can be very dangerous. My boys have shown me five emojis that I can do. I know what they mean. Unlimited five. Outside of that, there's so many emojis, I don't know what they mean. I don't know what all the faces mean. And in the employment world, we have to be careful, because we might be adding emojis onto a text or an email, and the receiver is the person who is interpreting that, and they're like, why are you sending me these emojis? These emojis are racist, are racy. There was a claim that happened, not in Oregon, for a city, but in another city, another state, where just a text with the emojis that were added to that text became a sexual harassment case, and it was up to $100,000, just based on the pictures, just based on the emojis that were added to this text, because the receiver interpreted those emojis as being very sexually charged. It's like, well, what's going to happen here as the receiver? So, we have to remember, we don't interpret everything the same way. And with emojis, I guess we've left those cute little yellow faces, and we've gotten them to fruits and vegetables. So, it just keeps expanding, and, you know, some of us are like, what is going on here? So, again, every generation kind of has their language, I will say. While in the employment world, we're all in it together. So, whether we knew, or didn't know, or should have known, we have to dissect it and always be professional. And so, when we think we're being funny, as many of these people think they're just being funny, we have to dissect that funny. What does it mean? How is it being received? Because that's what happens in claims. The bad actor is just the bad actor, and they often don't mean it that way. Well, the receiver, they're the ones that decide. No, I received this email, I received this text, I received this comment, and this is how I am interpreting it. And when we do investigations, and we talk to the bad actor, they go, oh, that's not what I meant. It's not that big of a deal. Well, guess what? It is for the person who just received that. So, again, how this can come all the way down to your interaction with staff, as well as staff interactions with you. All of that is a no-go, regardless of what seat you are sitting in, elected or employment. Okay, yellow light. This is where I think most of us live. This is kind of the everyday-to-day interaction. This is what I like to call your unconscious bias in your private radio station, because it turns based on who you're having a conversation with, and how you feel about that person, whether that person's a positive person for you, or whether that person's a negative person for you. It kind of comes out in how we speak and interact. So, one of the things that I like to put in this section is bullying. This is not illegal behavior. You're a bully to everyone, well, you're not discriminating against anyone, you're a bully to everyone. The problem is that this kind of conduct often sets the stage then for illegal conduct, because if you are bullying towards someone, that person is being picked on, that person is going to fill in the blank as to why you are bullying them. They're going to say, I'm being bullied because of my gender, or my gender identity, or my pregnancy, or my race, or my religion. They're going to fill that blank in, okay? This, of course, creates a very toxic working relationship. This, of course, creates a very toxic working relationship. How do we get anything done when we're being bullied? Not a positive environment, you know? Oftentimes, people are like, "Hey, you know, I'm the boss," or, "You know, I have power. I can say what I want to say the way I want to say it." Well, well, are you getting anything done by that kind of conduct? You know, are we here to serve our community? Are we here to reach our council goals and work through our staff to get things done? So how are we showing up? What behavior are we displaying? Oftentimes, bullying behavior is meant to intimidate. So bias, we all know that we have bias. We have our conscious and our unconscious bias. Our conscious bias, that's how we roll, you know, that's how we make decisions during the day. You know, we decided what we were gonna put on when we got up this morning, unless we wore a uniform, you know? I mean, we made those choices. We decided what kind of car to buy. We decided where do we live. We decide what our consciously held beliefs are. These are all conscious values. And some of our conscious values do bring forth explicit bias. We may have biases towards people who are different from us, and they may be part of our value statements. There might be that. We also have our unconscious bias. And this is again where I think most of us spend our day. This is that radio station that's always going on in your brain. You're reacting throughout the day. Not like consciously thinking about some decisions. You're just making them, okay? You're just making them as you roll. And some of those decisions are just based on who you are and how you were raised, what your thoughts are, what your beliefs are, just kind of how you navigate life, okay? This is also the area that can get you in trouble. So those child psychologists out there say that your unconscious bias was starting to be formed when you were like a three or a four-year-old. So has anybody been around a three or a four-year-old? They're like little sponges, right? They just beep and repeat. You know, have you ever heard a little three or a four-year-old used to swear words? "Oh, my goodness, where did they learn that? Really? Mom, Dad, Grandma, and Grandpa? Where do you think they learned it? You know, they lived at home. They learned it around the valley." I mean, they're sponges. They just pick everything up. And then they say by the time that child is 10, 11, they've already formed their biases. They've formed their biases against people who are different from them because that's what they learned in the household. And then if you continue to, you know, roll up and become a teenager and then into adulthood, you continue to have experiences and your biases continue are formed based on those experiences. And then you either come to work wherever you work or you join council or you work, and you bring all of yourselves into that role. And that is where we have to extend some grace to each other. The fact of the matter is, we don't see everything the same way. But we all usually have the same common goal, and that is to serve our community. Just like we get there in different ways. But we have to be respectful of the fact that we all might get there just a little bit. Okay, microaggressions. So you might have heard of all these micros. It's been very popular in the last five years. I think I've had them in my training now for five years. We have microaggressions, and micro-messaging, and micro-inequity. Those are all different terms to, again, express how we might come across. So micro-messaging might be your body language. And oftentimes, we speak with our body before we speak with our voice. And our body often extends some very strong biases. We do not like someone? We're definitely gonna show it in our body language or our tone or our voice. Just they, somebody's gonna know very easily through our body language, okay? Microiniquity, that might be not learning somebody's name because we can't pronounce it. So maybe someone is from somewhere else or they have a name that's not an American name, not an English name. So if I look at the name, I don't know how to pronounce it because I can't. When you say your name, it doesn't look like the letters. So oftentimes, it's just easier to cry over that person or just say, you know, "You say your name because I don't want to mess it up." So you say your name. Why does it feel good to people? People like to be recognized. They like their names to be said. So in the course and scope of you being a city counselor, you're gonna work with all, all sorts of people. You know, ask them how, especially if it's somebody that you're gonna be interacting with a lot. Have them write their names in phonics, sounding it out, so that you can sound, you can learn the sounds that you can say their names. That's one of the biggest things about being treated different or being excluded is their names. Everybody wants to be spoken by their name. So microaggressions, this is when we are of the majority and we kind of snub it someone of a minority. Again, oftentimes, maybe it's in a stereotypical way. Oftentimes, it's unintentional. We don't mean to. There might be expressions that we use, expressions that we learned as children, you know? And they just come flying out of our mouth, and we don't realize what we've said. So oftentimes, they're unintentional. What I teach in the staff classes and I also teach with city council is, you know, if somebody uses a microaggression, just politely, not in front of other people, go to that person and say, "Yeah, I don't know if you were aware of what you said in there, but that expression you used, this is what that means." Or "This is the historical significance." And oftentimes, people are like, "Oh, I had no idea. I had no idea I said that. I didn't mean to say that." Or, "Boy, that's an expression my mother used to use, you know, and she was a saint, so, oh my gosh." Just because we are so aware now of expressions that we use and how they may offend someone who is different from us, whether they're in the room or not in the room. Okay, so discretion, policy. You need to know about the policies that the city must abide by because an individual or staff member may come to you. You manage the city manager. So if there's a concern, if there's a concern about the city manager, a staff person has the right to come to one of you. So what happens when that happens? Oh, my goodness. It never happens. But we have some members where, you know, the bad actor is the top boss. So what do staff do? Are they stuck because, well, you know, I can't say anything because the person who's doing the inappropriate conduct is the top boss? What do we do? What's our avenue? You become that avenue. But how you receive that information is extremely important. So January 2020, it took a lot of things happening in Oregon Legislature. And every time we're getting legislature, then they usually pass some kind of an employment thing, which is another law for us to implement. But in January of 2020, the Workplace Protection Fairness Act was passed. This is a very long policy. This covers, you know, we always had harassment and discrimination policies. But this one changed the game on many levels. It's a very long policy. It talks about how a complaint or a concern, don't have to call them complaints anymore, can come forward. What happens when the employer or the representative of the employer receives that complaint or concern? What action do we have to take? What is the process? The statute of limitations went from one year to five years? Oh, my goodness, do you remember what you had to practice three years ago on, you know, Mark Second? No, you know, but if you are the victim, no, you've got all your notes, right? You've got everything written down. Okay, so things have evolved. Part of this was because concerns or complaints were being brought to management, and the manager was making their own biased decision as to whether they thought there was any merit or not to complain to the concern. So a manager was receiving the complaint and saying, "No, that's just Dan. You know, that's just who he is. He doesn't mean anything by what he's saying. He's okay, he's gonna retire after a couple of years, don't worry about it." No, that's not okay. So management were making their own decisions about whether there was merit to complaints or concerns of potential harassment, discrimination, or retaliation. And so this law says, you must identify two people in your policy where all staff know they can go to or any manager. Now, if, again, if your employee, an employee might come to you. What happens if an employee comes to you? You do. Do not start sharing it with each other. City attorney? I contact the city attorney. That will be your avenue, okay? We do not start spreading it amongst ourselves. But now, it's out there. It becomes public. And a person has a right to bring their concern or complaint forward and have it be treated with the utmost respect. That any other employee is gonna have their concern or complaint treated if it was inside the employment realm. So what happens when a complaint or concern comes forward? The law says employer, if you, if it might hit the category. Somebody says, "I need retaliation." Okay, we have to investigate. Or, "I'm in harass." Okay, we have to complain. We don't decide at that time whether there's merit to it. We are required, though, in Oregon, to start that process. So we're gonna have to investigate. Now, oftentimes, members can do it themselves. Sometimes, they go to somebody on the outside. You might be hearing from some neighboring communities, it's like, oh, yeah. Oh, they had an investigator going, you know, it's been taking... Well, that's because maybe of the topic. And that was the best thing for them to bring in outside first. So there's various ways of doing it. And a member doesn't need to know upfront exactly how they're gonna do that. They can call CIS. But we are gonna talk to people who might have been involved. We're gonna look for documentation, pictures, emails, whatever. All of that's gonna come into the investigation. At the end of the investigation, there's gonna be a report. At the end of the report, there's gonna be a decision. Is there dis-pleaded, is there discharge? We must do this process.
What happens if the city attorney does not do that and/or is a witness to it and doesn't do the right thing? What happens then? What's the next team of command?
Outside of the attorney? So not the city attorney, you know, it could come to the mayor, but you call CIS. We're gonna help you with the appropriate path based on what's going on. Because again, if it starts going through the elected body without, you know, bringing our investigator in, that is going to get very dangerous. Now, that's gonna be in the paper. And the person who brought the concern forward has the right to have it treated with dignity and respect. So, you know, we call CIS and law will help you with that avenue, but that's usually the avenue as we go. If it's about...
Help the city manager, we're gonna go... If it comes to you guys, it's like, we want you to go to the city attorney to tee that up.
So if the parties don't feel that they were treated fairly or it wasn't investigated properly, they have five years to bring an action against the city?
So to work with, yeah, it's five years for to work with them, yeah, yeah. And again, that's based on harass, you know, potential illegal conduct, yeah, yeah. So, you know, that's what the investigation's for. Sometimes, you know, things get so emotional that once they go through the investigation, here's what happens sometimes in investigations. People like the outcome. They're like, "No, no, 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 no. I was the victim here, and this is what happened to me." And the investigation shows that, well, maybe it was really bad. Maybe it was toxic, but maybe it wasn't illegal. So that's sometimes the threshold, as you know. Was it illegal conduct or was it just bad stuff? You know, people being not nice to each other, people being very vocal, very harsh, making it very difficult. That environment can be almost as worse, you know, worse than an actual illegal conduct is when it's illegal or like, oh, it's illegal, right? When there's a better avenue almost. It's when it can just be really tough, very toxic. Those are often the most difficult ones to overcome because the victim feels, oh, they're the victim. And it's like, no, this is what has happened to me. But the investigation shows, well, it really wasn't any illegal conduct. It was just bad conduct. In the end, it's hard to repair. Hard to repair because we're people. And we're all going to receive information different. We're all going to receive conduct different. Somebody might say, "Well, that's just me. I'm harsh. Buck up, buttercup." And the other person is like, "No, that's not how I'm going to allow to be spoken to. It's disrespectful. No, don't speak to me that way." We have to manage this. People are not right, they're not wrong. We have to manage our differences. And again, that's why I kind of talked about where we were raised, how we were raised, our generations, because we see the world the way we were raised. But when we come together, especially as positions of city councilors, where you have power, when you became a city councillor or a mayor, you have the power. Happens, soon as you get elected, things change. And some people put that power on and going, "What? I am the person. You will do things my way. I'm here for a reason." And how it comes across can sometimes be very damaging when our intent is to further our community. So we just have to sometimes look at, how are we communicating? Where's the wedge? How did we get there? Can we peel that onion back and start over? Because what's our common goal? Our goal is to further... Where are your council goals? I'm sure you're gonna pass them. If you haven't guessed, pass them for your fiscal year. You know, maybe it takes a couple. I think we used to do them in March. You know, you're gonna be probably coming together and passing the goals that you want the city manager and staff to execute. Well, if we're not communicating, how are we even gonna do that, right? Yeah, so it can be very difficult. But when it comes to that illegal conduct, we must take the time under Oregon laws to investigate. And then based on the report is how the decision is made and what happens. So preventing discrimination and harassment, as an elected official, okay, you have to be familiar with these policies. So it is in the handbook, right? Did you by cut it in your handbook? Your updated version?
Somewhat, yeah.
Somewhat, okay. If not, CIS has an updated version that you can just cut and paste. And we want you just to cut and paste what we've done because it was written by our employment attorneys and we revisit it every single year. But you need to know about that policy because the staffer required to abide by it, and you must know it. Because what happens if staff comes to you and/or have you committed it through the employment relationship as a city councillor, okay? So we need to learn how to identify when somebody's raising a concern to you. Oftentimes, people don't use the magic words. They don't come and go like, "Excuse me, Mayor, I have been discriminated against, and here's the reason, and here's how I've been discrimi..." Don't die on what happens. They're gonna lob it out to you. And probably not when you're at city hall. They're gonna catch you in the grocery store. They're gonna catch you somewhere else. When I was the assistant city manager at City Redmond, I also did HR and risk. And I learned everything that was going on inside the walls and the halls of the city of Redmond, Saturday morning at Fred Meyer in the grocery section in fruits and vegetables. For some reason, I don't care when I was shopping there with my baseball cap on and my ponytail thing, she's not incognito, nobody's gonna recognize me. I'd hear the, "Hi, Sharon." "Oh, hi, how are you?" Oh, a little chit-chat about how the kids, blah, blah, blah. And then came the bomb. "Did you hear what happened last week over at Public Works?" "No, do tell." "Okay, now I've been put on notice. It's Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. What do I do on Monday?" Immediately into investigate. Or my favorite time that people track me down was Friday afternoon on my way up to my car. I'm about to get in, it's snowing, and here comes the employee. And for the next half hour, in the freezing cold, I'm hearing their story. They catch you outside of the core area because why? When people have a concern to be brought forth, they don't want anyone else to care. So they're gonna catch you in all sorts of avenues. You need to know what your role is and what you do with that when, if someone or employee brings something to you, okay? We have to remember, there's rumors, there's gossip, there's reality, right? And oftentimes, based on who's bringing something to us, we decide whether we like that person or don't like that person, if what they're telling us is reality or not, or true or not. And we have to do the investigation before our biased decision of, "Oh, yeah, well, you know, it's Mary Jane, and I believe Mary Jane. You know, Mary Jane would never lie, blah, 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 blah. Therefore, it must have happened." We have to reserve that and do our investigation first. But to the nature is to go right to where our bias is. What's our relationship with that person who brought that concern to us, right? So confidentiality for you is no crucial as a standpoint, right? You have an obligation to keep personnel's information confidential? There is a process for it. We do not want it getting in the paper early. We do not want this getting out because, under personnel rules, people have the right to the confidential process. When confidential issues are addressed, When confidential issues are addressed, oftentimes, the victim doesn't get to know what the outcome is. Let's say somebody's not going to get fired. Let's say there's an investigation, someone's not fired. The victim often says, I want to know what happened. I want to know what you're doing. Why is that person still here? I have a right to know what the outcome is. And you're like, sorry, I can't tell you that. I can't tell you whether they got a written warning or out on leave or whatever.
Personnel is personnel, there's, there's that confidentiality. And so we, again, as, or you as councillors, need to be very careful if a staff member is bringing something to you. Okay, common claims against public officials, because we do have them. Um, in the realm of employment, it might be sometimes when we have city councillors that overstep their roles. They go around the city manager to a staff person. Well, because maybe the staff person's your neighbor. It's so much easier to walk across the street and say, hey, Stan, why aren't you shoveling my street? Or I want you to shovel my street before you shovel any stone from anybody else's street, you know? Or I want you to do this on my street just because I'm a city councillor, okay? Going outside of the course and scope of our positions when, when we are acting on behalf of the city to a member of, of our staff. Defamation claims, huge category. Probably one of the biggest categories for city councillors when it relates especially to staff are claims of defamation. Um, sometimes conflict, conflicts of interest claims. Um, we've had this in some other members where, you know, we have a business owner who's on city council and they want favoritism in zoning or whatever. You would think these are no brainers, but nope, they happen. Um, so somebody's using a position of power to get what they want done. Um, violating, um, meeting laws, uh, that's a pretty common one. Or getting involved in employment decisions where it's not your role. Council do not have the right to tell the city manager who to hire. City manager manages the organization. The city manager makes the employment decisions of staff. But we often get city councillors who want their friend to be employed or their family or someone and the pressure to hire. You cannot do that. That is not your role. So that is actually, uh, going outside of, of your course and scope. So we have to be, we have to be careful of this. And we have to remember, because you're a councillor, you're being watched. You have kind of like that bullseye on your back. People know who you are. They elected you. So they're paying attention to you. They're paying attention to the conversations that you're having in the grocery store with members of the community or the barber shop or wherever you gather. People hear you, they're paying attention to those conversations. So, uh, the big ones are, um, employment decisions, terminations or layoffs where maybe a city councillor is telling another city councillor, I'm going to fire that city manager. I'm going to get in there and I'm going to fire that person. Okay, you, you can't do that. You can't just start going telling other city councillors that you're going to fire your employee. Um, there's a process for this. So you can't, you know, go in there and start saying things like that. It's going to come out in a defamation claim or explaining, uh, or going around telling everybody how horrible your city manager is. And, and again, you know, when I start, I'm going to fire that person, that person's going to be gone. You can't do that. Um, you can't create the hostile work environment for the staff. Okay? Um, and that's the illegal stuff, but you should also not be creating a bad workplace for the staff either. You should not be adding to a bad culture. You should be adding to a good culture. So you have to remember what your scope of authority is and not act outside of your scope of authority. Um, failures provided due process when terminated. So sometimes we do terminate our core employee. Well, there's a process for that. Again, we're the government. So, um, violating due process. And again, uh, we tell our members, call us before you do these actions because, uh, they'll have the right to be told why in government. Why are you firing me? They have the right to that due process. Maybe when we take away their due process, um, that is not going to help you. That is when, again, the claims start coming in. So professional contact, well, green light is pretty easy, you know? Treat people the way we want to be treated. It's the simple thing. It's the, when I come to work or when I'm coming to city councillor and I'm going to engage in these conversations, how am I showing up? What's my tone? What bone do I have to pick? You know, what, how am I coming across? Am I adding to it or am I taking it away? Are we spending our meetings rehashing something that happened three weeks ago just because we felt we didn't get a good enough say? Or are we starting, or are we coming in and saying, you know what? We got business to take care of. How are we, how are we going to move the needle? We all make decisions how we show up every single day in our work, in our elected, uh, position. It's, it's all up to you. You actually create the culture on your council here and you also help to create the culture in the employment because it trickles down to the city manager, which then trickles down to the staff. So, you know, I usually go like an hour and a half on this class. So I, I, I know you wanted this seven hours. So I try to go as fast as I can. This is my contact information. Um, thank you for, uh, letting me come to do this. Now, League of Oregon Cities, you are part of League of Oregon Cities. League of Oregon Cities has fantastic trainings on elected officials. I suggest that you try and get into their classes when they become available for you because it is excellent, excellent training and they go for hours and they dig into your specific roles as elected bodies. Mine is just touch basically on how it relates to employment. So thank you very much for allowing me to come this evening. Yes, Margaret, is your risk manager from C I S?
Hi, everybody. Um, the essential training is going to be recorded at the Learning Center. Everybody, I think it was-
Oh, that is fantastic because you can do that and then it's a workshop. That is so great to train together. Thank you. I didn't know that they were putting that in a learning center.
That's the one they did last month.
Kids, you have not had that training. Highly recommend that training. Train together in a workshop or train on your own. You have access to the Learning Center. Such important information because again, it really helps identify your liability. And you do have liability as an elected official and you need to know what that is. So the claims get prevented because here's what happens when there's a claim. Everybody pays. You're part of the pool. So if we want our premiums low, if we don't want our premiums to go up, we don't want claims. When there are claims, the premiums go up. It's pretty easy math. So, you know, this is why we do training. This is why L O C does training. Because, you know, it's a lot to learn when you become an elected official or just a public employee in today's world, especially in- So again, thank you very much for allowing me to come.
Can you keep the table?
No, we have to reorg. So we'll take a break, yep. So we'll take a break for about five to 10 minutes while we reorg this room a little bit and get the seating reorganized and the tables shuffled to the side. And, uh, you guys are welcome to tell for, uh, as this stage left so we can clearly move stuff around and get them all in place. Okay, thank you. We have, uh, the cameras aren't working. They're, they're working on them, so, um, we have to, we got this camera going and then we have a camera over here. So, uh, we will get started. Uh, first order of business, uh, pledge of allegiance, councillor Kazmierski.
Please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, thank you. The call is a meeting to order at 7:15. Roll call, please.
Councillor E.
Here.
Councillor Harmon.
Here.
Councillor Kelvin.
Here.
Councillor Kazmierski.
Here.
Councillor Bremer.
Here.
Councillor Tykman.
Here.
Here.
Here. All right, thank you. Moving on, um, as I've seen, I've changed up some of the agenda, uh, doing a consent agenda to hopefully expedite meetings. We don't have to go through each individual item. So on our consent agenda, we have the January 15, 2025 council minutes. The city council work in special session, December 28, 2024 minutes. And December 2024 financials. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
No, move.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, you found more. I know, uh, councillor Kazmierski found some and I think Ronnie made those edits already. I don't know if they're duplicates of what you found, but like, I don't think so.
No, page, page 10, um, the voice vote count is incorrect.
The what now?
Voice vote count on-
Oh, okay.
The financials. I mean, it's not a big deal, but-
Okay. Oh, they can't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay. Is that the only edits? We can amend the motion to, um, make the corrections to, it's just the January 15 minutes on page 10. The voice vote was incorrect. We can get this to, uh, Ronnie.
412, right?
Correct. And I think it was written as 502. Anything else? Okay, with that, um, I'll take, uh, do you just need a roll call vote?
Councillor, show a hand.
Uh, all in favor? Raise your hand. All right, thank you. Uh, special presentations, we have none tonight. Um, open forum. So open forum is intended to ensure the community has an opportunity to provide input for items being considered on the agenda or make suggestions for future agendas. Uh, at this time, council will be happy to receive your comments pertaining to items on the agenda with the exception of public hearings in which testimony will be received and conducted in the proper form and manner at the time of the hearing. Each, each person's time will be limited to three minutes. Um, we'll take it in person here or via Zoom. Um, and I'm also, I would like to make a change to where if you want to make public comment, we'll go off of a sign in sheet and, um, put your name in Zoom, just put that you want to make a public comment. With that, we'll start with anyone on Zoom? Okay? Go on, okay. Let's go in, in, uh, in council chambers. We have, uh, Mr. Woods.
Who's that up?
I think so. Are you because they're standing or sit? How are you?
Okay. Um, good evening. Uh, my name's Gary Woods. I live in King City. I think you've seen me before. I saw on the agenda for tonight, Resolution R 2025 dash two. I'm not sure if it's intended, we discussed tonight by the council. Since the agenda doesn't show any action plan, resolution's very vague and it doesn't give the community any guarantees. And it says this city council, but this is not legally binding and it still doesn't meet the community's goal of revisiting the T S P. And it says that it would be revisited in 2030, if I understand it correctly. Appears to me to be another attempt to pacify the community, but it doesn't. I've been coming to council meetings, reading documents, sending emails to councillors, talking to neighbors and the council knows kind of what we're interested in to revisit the T S P. Not some resolution that talks about, um, not using eminent domain. If you want to pacify the community, I suggest that somebody tonight makes a motion and seconds it to revisit the T S P and seriously consider changing the T S P. Um, you know, I hadn't come in for a long time and talked to a number of you and all good people. And my neighbors are so discouraged, they don't bother to come. I talked to my neighbors and they're like, no, there's no sense going down city hall because they don't listen. And I don't know very many people in my community that, uh, don't feel the same way that I do. I'll go there some. Um, so I'm just saying, it looks to me like just another attempt to pacify when we've already been told in the past that the T S P would be revisited a year ago. And up till now, I haven't seen that. And I've talked to some of you and you said that you're open to revisiting it. So I'm just saying, this resolution is swimming upstream. And if you'd like to get the community and the council together, I encourage you to deal with the T S P and make the change. Community doesn't want Fisher Road to be a collector road. We realize it's going to go through, but, uh, we want it to remain a local road like it was when we bought our property. And, uh, we don't want a road going through the banks and property. We've said that like 10,000 times. And, uh, so I just wanted to say that since I saw this in here and I haven't really talked to people about it, so I don't know what everybody's thinking, but I just think that as you're considering that, that you may consider going a step further and revisit the T S P. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Mr. Meyer. Take your name and city, please.
Mike Meyer, Tiger. Let's start off by saying I don't support the resolution on tonight's agenda. I sent an email yesterday to all of you explaining why. Resolution provided, uh, in tonight's agenda did not provide what's being asked of the council. Other agendas with resolutions have provided information regarding the action expected, uh, in the past and whether or not it will be voted on. In this case, the public wasn't notified if there will be a vote tonight. And I didn't receive any agenda update. At the last council meeting, there was a robust discussion about ensuring the public is properly notified with an agenda in advance. Uh, what's the purpose of the resolution? If it's to satisfy the public, I think as written, it does the opposite. Uh, if it's to advance some plan for the city, please share with us how this resolution achieves this. If I remember correctly, in the past, there's been some discussion beforehand and I don't recall any past council meeting. Whose idea was it and who wrote it? I'm assuming the city attorney had a hand in this since it's a legal document, which brings up another question. That is, the municipal code 2.08040, powers and duties, talks about the city manager. And the city manager shall exercise control and supervision of all activities, departments and officers of the city government, except the office of municipal judge and the position of city attorney. I interpret that to mean city council exercises control and supervision of all activities of the city attorney. Uh, what's happening?
Thank you. And next up, we have Ms. Mobley. Name and city, please.
Hi, Dawn Mobley, and I am part of the U G B, so how you're in King City area. Um, I am also here to discuss the resolution of 25, 2025-02. Um, I did email a few of you today and I just kind of wanted to bring up a couple of points. Um, one of them was, um, it states in there that grant money is needed for a relook of the T S P. Um, and I would just like to point out that legal fees as of the end of last year in July totaled $200,000. And the budget again this year for legal fees is $100,000. I feel that if you look back just a couple of years, I think the legal fees has drastically increased and you're wasting a lot of money on legal fees fighting your constituents when the T S P could have been left out. And we don't need imminent domains. If you just were to adjust the road in the T S P, then you don't even need imminent domains. It will just be willing sellers. So, resolution is a little off for one. But two, it also states in there that, um, oh, there was, let me just remind myself, sorry. Uh, that, uh, you guys are going to, um, the city commits to maintaining an open dialogue with residents and property owners. And I want to know exactly how King City plans to do this. And I want to know specifically how the city is planning to fulfill this commitment of transparency and public engagement. Because I hear it a lot, it gets said a lot, but I don't really feel like it ever happens. Those are kind of the two things that I wanted to bring up that I do agree with the other two that already spoke tonight. I just wanted to add a couple of things. Thank you.
All right, that's all we had in the building. Uh, we have online, we have, uh, Ms. Hartman.
You there?
Yes, we're here. Say your name and city, please.
Uh, my name is Stephanie Hartman and I live in King City. Um, full disclosure, yes, John Hartman is my husband. Um, so I, I wanted to come today, but I had other commitments. Um, and I'm here doing a lot of projects. Um, but I am wanting to say that I am hopeful that all the councillors that are there will be able to come together for the better of our city. Um, many of my neighbors that I talk to daily, that I see in the schools, in the parks, are- Um, many of my neighbors, uh, that I talk to daily, that I see in the schools, in the parks, are feeling like enough is enough. Um, we don't want to see more recalls, we don't want to see more turmoil, and despite what Mr. Woods said earlier, uh, many of the neighbors are not wanting to come to the council meetings, not because they feel like they won't be heard, or that councilors won't listen, but because they are afraid. They are afraid of retaliation by the very people, um, that maybe we don't agree with. Um, many of us, myself included, have been harassed by community members, um, both online and in person. I have been threatened online and in person, in the park, uh, by community members. Um, many of the families and the individuals who call King City, King City home. We just want to have back that city that was so coveted. People wanted to move here. It was coveted for the existing community, but it was coveted for the possibility of what our city could become, and it is sad, the amount of people that are moving out. Good people, families, individuals. Um, I really hope that we can see this come to an end, this turmoil that is constantly being caused. I understand that not everyone is going to get what they want. We are all going to have to make, um, changes, um, but enough is enough. Um, and I do truly, truly appreciate everyone who is sitting up there today and who is willingly putting yourselves in this line of public fire. As somebody who has also put themselves in that, I get it. It is a thankless job that, uh, really, I don't, I don't know what type of individual wants to, you know, be berated, um, by people, but you still go in there and do that, so I appreciate it. Um, and I have all the faith that, um, the seven of you guys will be able to get done for the city what we are all hoping to have. And that is all.
All right, thank you. Okay, so now that closes open forum. Um, unfinished business, we have... Oh, sorry. Gary Davis. Okay, so online, we have, uh, Mr. Davis.
Hi, everyone, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Say your name and city, please.
Yeah, my name's Gary Davis, I live in, uh, King City. Um, I just, I'm sorry I couldn't be there today, but I did want to reply, um, back to that comment a minute ago. I, I definitely agree that enough is enough, uh, Ms. Hartman. Um, I, I do think something needs to change in this city, but here's where I think a little bit differently. I disagree that somebody has to lose. I believe that there's a chance where everyone could win if you just listen to each other. So, maybe, maybe half the city feels one way, the other half feels one way. I feel like half the city has only been going one direction, and it's been, the previous council has been doing what they want it to do, their own personal agendas. I disagree with that. I think we can actually move forward in this current meeting, with this current resolution and future meetings, where we all could win. We just need to listen to each other and work together, because half the people are unhappy with the current direction of the city. That is a fact, right? We can look at the recent votes and understand that. That's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, now, are we, okay. Open forum is closed, thank you. Uh, moving on, we have unfinished business, we have none.
We have, we have some unfinished business on there, um, at the, at the January fifteenth, city council...
Uh, councillor, if you're, take a breath, you're out of order.
I, I'm just trying to make an amendment.
No, point of order, we're following the agenda.
Yeah, I'm on the agenda, I have unfinished business I'd like to bring up.
We're not doing, well, there is no unfinished business, point of order, we're on the agenda.
Okay, so you're saying that I cannot bring up unfinished business because it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to make an amendment, I'd like to amend the agenda, and I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda then.
Councillor Braverman, Rule two point three, four point one four zero, rules of debate.
You're missing the municipal code that says I have the power and the right to amend the agenda.
You're out of order, and if you keep doing this, I will, that's a warning, and if you keep doing it, we will have to ask you to move, to, to leave the meeting, thank you.
All right, so you're denying my, my motion.
The motion you want to talk about, we're talking about in executive session. Okay, new business. Uh, we have Resolution two zero two five dash zero one, declaring council support for playground grants. Manager Weston.
Uh, Mr. Weston's not here today, he's on vacation, but, uh, he has started this LGP grant, uh, for our park, or... It's for a, we get some playground equipment. Uh, if you recall, uh, last year, we brought a number of park proposals forward to the council, we showed you, uh, those three designs and concepts, uh, the council picked one of those designs, we put that into the grant application, we're asking for, for, to go after this, might, uh, potentially replace playground equipment down in the park.
I have a question. I am the parks expert on this, on this basis, I think you all agree to that. I understand why you're asking for so much money. I went and inspected that equipment. And I'm coming to you from a different level, I'm coming to you from Portland Parks to Recreation, okay? We would not be replacing any of that stuff yet, we would be fixing some of it, we would be altering some of it, but we wouldn't be doing that if for $100,000, you could do a lot of work. So, I'm not sure what you're going to do with the rest of the money. I have my doubts about that money being applied to parks, specifically those parks.
I'm happy to explain where the cost goes.
Okay.
Uh, the, uh, right now, you have archip down there in the circle to be replaced with the rubberized turf.
Why?
And then the, uh...
No, why? I'm asking you a question. They're, they're buying the way they are.
Talking, you are out of order.
We're having a conversation.
No, you're, you're yelling, okay.
I'm trying to talk, because I can't get my, can't hardly hear him. Go ahead.
So, the concept is to try to upgrade and improve the park equipment that's there. Uh, we've had, hopefully this works, can you hear me any better now? So, I'll, I'll just try to speak louder. Um, the idea is to get some swing sets on the far side, so we'll have some swing sets, some small kid equipment, some ADA accessibility, accessible equipment to upgrade the rubberized, or to upgrade the floor to a more protective rubberized system, and then to, of course, change the, uh, park equipment itself. So, it's the overhaul of all the park equipment down there in the park, and that's what we presented to the council previously. And that's what we're asking for the grant.
A contract has not been awarded. Will there be three different, um...
Bids?
Okay. I want to be a part of that.
You, you would definitely be presented all three bids, this would be evaluated, and then brought to the council with a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
That is, thank you. I have a question, is it 300,000 total, or up to 300,000, is it?
Uh, the grant's 300,000, I think we also have a match ourselves. So, in our park, if you look at our park fund, I believe we have a $100,000 per park improvement, and then that would be our match for it. Right, so, uh, it would be up to 400,000 total.
So, we find like we don't need all of that money, let's say we don't need 300,000, like councillor or D.D., possibly, depending on what, which, would then the grant amount lower, and then our out-of-pocket would lower?
Yeah, so the grant accounting, in order to be reimbursed for grant accounting, we have to throw, we have to miss back the receipts, and all spend is made, and then we match, it's matched as it goes, and there's a retainer, we don't get the end of the retainer until all things are paid. And then, uh, typically, the grant administration organization would then reimburse us for the last, uh, 10% retainer or 15% retainer at the end. But, uh, if we don't spend the money, we don't get the money, right, and it's matched as it's expended, so...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So, um, essentially, if we submit for reimbursement, we pay our share of the match at that point in time. So, every reimbursement that we go through, every milestone that we hit, we request the reimbursement, and then we submit what our match was at that point in time, and they match their share of it.
And we're capped at 100 grand of city dollars? I've had several emails coming to me about that. Now, would there be a bathroom, fixed bathroom included in that?
The problem with the restroom at the King City Park is that it is downstream from where the sanitary lines are on Montague. So, we would either need a grinder pump and, and a system to pump it up to drop it into the, the gravity main, or we would need to be above that line. And so, if you looked at the plan on the West Side Trail, you would see the restroom facility at the Montague location, because then we can dive into the sewer, and it would, we wouldn't need the grinder pump and the force made up.
How often is that porta potty serviced?
Uh, weekly, at least.
By the city or by, by the city or by another, by the company?
By outside contractor. And then, if we have, we had trouble with it previously with the prior, uh, service providers. The latest one's been pretty good so far, and then, um, our maintenance crew out there has been doing a pretty stellar job out there on the...
You might want to talk about that offline, Mike, I would agree, I would disagree that it's been taken care of.
The, the park itself?
Well, no, the porta potties.
Oh, yeah, the porta potties, the vintage, mid, it, I think, uh, you know, again, Dave's not here, he's the one that goes down and tries to come on, Dave, but he does say that they're doing better than the last group of...
I think so, on the porta potties, we only have the ADA one by the basketball courts, the one by the tennis courts is the sports teams, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so we maintain the ADA one, but that's the one that's on the, it's to the north of the basketball hoop, that's our porta potty. The other one is brought in by Albion or...
The sports teams, so the one by the tennis courts is not ours.
I have no problem with porta potties. Fixed bathroom isn't, is an attractive nuisance. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have one, I'm just saying that there's all sorts of problems when you have fixed bathrooms. So, I just wondered if that rest of that munch would be good, or something like that.
We did estimate on the fixed restroom facility, and it was about $250,000 for that facility, I think, yeah.
Uh, my question is, um, Dave is the person who's putting this forward, when is he going to be back?
Uh, he's on vacation for this weekend.
Does he have any photographs, or are there any photographs that we could look at it?
Of the playground equipment?
And what needs to be replaced, or fixed, or whatever?
Uh, well, what needs to be, it just needs to upgrade, and, uh, what we have is like a little kids playground, and then a, uh, look, a mid, mid-age playground. And one of the requests that we've gotten from the community consistently is that they want some swing sets, and they want, uh, a mixed facility where the, for all ages, essentially, and the ADA fees is also a concern of ours or, or something that we've been looking at. So, our hope is that the equipment that we're looking at bringing in, meets the ADA accessibility component, uh, that also allows us to make one larger playground facility, and then a side playground facility with some smaller kid devices in and around the, the playground circle, as well as, uh, the swing sets for both the little kids and for the...
So, you don't have any photographs to show today?
I do, I just don't have them right now.
Oh.
And I would have to go over there and sort through Dave's office to go find them, but it was presented previously, and I can definitely email it.
Maybe we can, we can vote on it after we look at the photos?
Otherwise, fine, uh, well, what's the...
I, I'd like to take a look.
Design on the grant application, I think we have another month or so. Uh, it's just, we can share the images of those...
Yeah, I think it was, was it the November meeting, maybe, or October, and there was like three different...
August or September.
Yeah, there was three different playground possibilities, they were just kind of, uh, some renderings that...
Go try to see if they're in his office, if he's trying to break for a comment, is that what you...
Sure, I think that would be great.
The, the question that's on the table, though, is what, you're asking for our authorization to go for the grant. The final design is not figured out, correct?
Yeah, there's been no...
I think that's just something to be clear, is that the pictures you're going to be showing are inspiration, they're ideas. Nothing's been drawn, nothing's been planned, so...
We, we have preliminary drawing for that, just so we could get the estimate on what playground equipment is going to cost. And so, we have preliminary designs and cost estimates already.
When were your cost estimates done, Mike?
What's that?
When were your cost estimates done?
Uh, last, well, last summer.
So, that doesn't take into consideration Governor Kotek's demand of all government work being PLA, union work?
Possibly not, yeah.
Then your prices are going to go up?
Potentially, yeah.
Mike, does that include labor too?
It should.
Excuse me, we're, we're in the, we're talking amongst the meetings. Yes, and there's been some public feedback that people in the audience are participating in our meeting.
Um, can I make a motion to, to vote, please? Second.
I haven't had a chance to ask a question.
Go ahead, always.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to clarify, because I think you'd already said, but we already have $100,000 in a park fund?
Actually, I think it's, uh, right now, sitting at 120, it was a carryover from last year, we just put...
And then each time we're matching, are we, um, matching at 100,000, um, set up receipts that go in, are we paying like a quarter of that total cost each time? Is that how that, like, front-loaded, or, okay?
Grant accounting, so each one that is put in, I would have to pull up the park budget to tell you the exact figure. But, um, and Mayor Manal, I recall exactly, over a period of, but I, I seem to recall it was 120,000 period over from...
I think somewhere in that neighborhood, yeah.
And so, um, yeah, as we, so say, we submitted a, uh, bill for $40,000, $10,000, so that would be match, it would be held back, so we don't get $40,000.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to vote.
I thought you were going to get us pictures, am I wrong?
The council wants to wait for that, that's...
All right, well, should I make a motion that we'd like to look at some photos?
We could have it, we could do it, most of the time, at recess, and Mike couldn't go and...
I think you need to clarify, they think you want to see pictures of what we're going to put in, not pictures of what's currently there, what... Oh, I'd like to see pictures of what's currently there, and what you're thinking you're going to put in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we have them in our files, and on our server, but it would take some time to, to pull that, I'd be happy to provide you...
Do you have pictures of what you want to do?
Yeah, Dave has those, but like I said, I don't know exactly where they are, it would take me a few minutes to chase them down. And to be honest, what we're asking is to get a resolution from the council to support our grant.
Okay.
We actually may not even get the grant dollars.
Right, we may not get the grant, we may not do anything, it's just to show support.
So, I think if we're just being asked, are we okay to submit for the grant for the 300 with the 100K match?
Yeah.
Then we all have the ability to look at the final design and make a decision on what to move forward.
Yeah.
So, I will, once again, make a motion to please vote, second, thank you.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Do you need a roll call vote? Probably should be a roll call vote.
Do you want a roll call, or just a hand, and I'll...
I just want clarification, this is...
Conflict of interest, not what I do.
Say that we approve that you're going forward with getting the grant, and the next meeting, you can show us the concept.
The resolution for political support to apply for grant.
Okay, and, and it's basically a three to one, so if, if the whole thing costs 200,000, then we're on the hook for 50,000, and, and the grant portion of it would be... That's my understanding. And so, what we're asking for, you are asking from us, is will you, do you have our permission to pursue this grant? In simple terms, without getting into a lot of legalities.
Last thing, I do not have a conflict of interest, this is not what my company does, so, just so that's clear on the record.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to a vote, all in favor, raise your hands. Opposed?
If you're abstaining.
Abstaining? You have a reason for abstaining?
I, I need more information, understand that.
We're doing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have item ten... Okay, moving on, we have item 10B, lease agreement Canyon Building. Mr. Weston.
We are looking at trying to hire additional staff right now. Information officer, additional officer in our, as well as additional officer in our fleet's force. This will bring our total staffing up to fifteen. My problem is right now I'm doubled up in offices already. I have Diana and Mira doubled up in an office. I have Dave and Max doubled up in office. Not really room in Ronnie's office with the records and everything else. And we're going to be back here with the squad room already doubled and tripled and quadrupled up with the officers back here. And where does that room? And so this gives us a little extra office space. I need to figure out who I put over there. But the request is to get this office space down in the Canyon Building just down the road on the right-hand side. It's an interior office space. It has two offices, but one of the offices is probably big enough I can put three additional members in there as a temporary solution. So I'm asking you to consider allowing me to enter into lease negotiations with this organization and try to get that office space locked down.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments?
How much is it going to cost?
It looks like a thousand dollars in their proposal.
So it looks like the base rent starts at eight oh nine a month. And then it's triple net and it looks, they're estimating the triple net cost at about three forty-one.
So the total they were saying, I believe, didn't they say it was eleven fifty?
Eleven fiftieth, yeah. Somewhere in there. Thank you.
The base rent is eight oh nine for the first year, eight thirty-three for the second year and eight fifty-eight for the third year. And then there's an estimated charge of three forty-one on top of that. And they, because it's a three-year lease, when I talked to her, I said, well, what if we happen to get in a situation where we no longer need that office space for the lease until they find a suitable replacement? So if we want, we can just advertise that lease as open and then bring in a suitable replacement to get out of the lease.
A lease or they'll let you cancel the lease for a replacement?
They would let us cancel it and then as long as they had another tenant coming in.
Is that statement in this lease?
I need to make sure it is. Yeah, before we execute it, we'll need to do legal review.
As long as we're not subject to a sublease.
How long has that property been vacant?
It's not vacant yet. It will be vacant in April, which was that property manager told me.
The landlord just.
It says it starts April first, so I don't, okay. I know that you're saying you're doubled up already and with addition of people. Are you going to have people to fill it by April? And you don't, you're not sure who's going to be in there yet?
I've already got people to fill it technically. I mean, I did, my thought is that Mira's our finance manager and she doesn't really have much of an interface with the public. So moving her into a suite over there might be efficient. Also, the public information officer, I may want to move over there. Or anyone who is not exactly straight with public facing, possibly Max, could be another person that I might consider moving over there because of the planning interfaces, more of an in-depth code interpretation and report writing. And so moving Max over there and possibly Mira in there and then building codes over there as well. And then making that planning and building codes office. So if anyone needed to come in for planning permit or building code issue, they would just go down there unless it's just an over the. So that was my, my thought initially. I still need some, work on some logistics on how that's going to work exactly. But my thought is, what are the two positions that are the lease, public facing and have the most in-depth report writing? And that's going to be essentially my finance manager and my planner.
Did you hire a public information officer?
It's open right now.
So you're interviewing people?
Yeah.
But you haven't.
We haven't started interviewing yet.
What's the role of the public information officer?
To provide information to the public in the form of newsletters, social media, websites.
Who currently is doing those things?
Ronnie.
Okay.
And, and yes, yes, it's. It's very, it's very difficult in a small city because we all wear mini hats and we're all being pulled in different directions. And so part of our growth plan is to start disseminating some of those job responsibilities and, and creating a more effective and appropriate job description that doesn't have to wear a mini hat and can actually do that job effectively. Sorry, I'm not speaking on a, the idea is to break them up, break up these positions where we're all wearing a dozen different hats and, and break them into individual positions eventually. But right now, the city's so small, we can't afford to do that yet. But as we grow, we should be able to compartmentalize these positions a little bit better than what we are right now.
So Ronnie's doing like two full-time jobs?
Oh, he's doing about ten full-time jobs. Well, it's about everybody here.
What about the money that you're spending on this essential lease for three years? Couldn't we use that money to maybe pay Ronnie more for doing the job? I mean, have you done a good possible?
You got his ears, I like that.
I am a negotiator. I'm wondering why we can't.
We are, we are working on that right now. The, what we negotiated, this was part of a prior conversation about personnel that I had with the council and through an executive session about what our needs were and what our personnel needs were and how we were going to plan our growth. But Ronnie had a lot on his plate to the point where it's overburdening him. And when that happens, then we see fractures and we see stresses on the staff and we see things that may not, that we were catching earlier, but now we're not catching, right? Same happens to me. Same happens to everyone in the building. When we get overburdened or whatever else, then our job performance essentially gets, then it gets spread to thin and we're unable to focus on the things that we need to focus on properly. And so my job as manager is to kind of identify when that's happening and figure out how I can relieve that stress. Like our officers, you know, right now our officers are stressed out because now we just added two hundred and fifteen acres and I can't expect the same number of officers to cover that same span. And it goes with the same here. We have passports if you come in during the day to come and see our office. We've got, you know, twenty-three people in the entry lobby waiting to get passports. That's very distracting for my more complex positions like my finance manager or my planner who have to write hundred-page reports or deal with numbers from all over. And so the idea is, and we knew we were going to have to do this at some point through the growing pains, but hiring these positions and filling these positions is going to be part of our growth pattern. And eventually I want to hire some other positions. Like you'll see in my office, I have a wish list board. And, you know, eventually we have plans for additional officers and additional sergeants, other positions, building codes, inspector, building official, city engineer. These are all things that we're going to have to look at at some point when it becomes effective. So we thought about possibly moving and considering how much of building codes we want to bring in house. Right now we're contracting with Claire Company, right? We are probably losing a lot of that revenue that's coming in right now because we're contracting with Claire Company, who does a phenomenal job for us, right? And the cost of service to fully staff a building code department is probably going to be over a million dollars, probably a million and a half to two million dollars, right? But Claire Company does that for us right now. We get twenty-five percent of the shares for administration leases. We also contract with Tiger to fill other roles. So we do a lot with what we have right now, but we are still spread really thin. And so each position we can add is a key element to how we conduct business.
Is it even budgeted in your budget?
It is. It is in the budget. And then we, and just so you're aware, Councilman, we are under, we are, are in negotiations right now with our union as well. So trying to resolve that union negotiation as well, so.
One last question then. We're signing a three-year lease. Are you taking enough space? Is that a long enough lease? I mean, you're only taking a couple hundred square feet.
Right, that's my concern.
Are you putting a Band-Aid on a bigger problem?
I am.
Then should we have a different discussion about leasing more and what that costs?
I, I, well, it's interesting bringing that up because last year we contracted with FSA to do some architectural designs for a new city hall. And as you may be aware, there's a municipal site in the Kingston Parish Town Center that we're eyeballing. And so I hope to meet with members of the governor's regional solutions group as well as Oregon infrastructure finance authorities and try to work out how we can fund that. Now, one of the measures or one of the means that we want to use to fund that is the possibility of establishing an urban renewal district. Because then we can go for revenue bond on what that urban renewal district can bring in over the course of the next thirty years or so. That is one of my goals, hopefully, to get started in this year. And I was going to talk to the council about what our goals have been, where we're at today and where we want to go in the future. And I'm really hoping that, I was going to talk about it later in my report, but getting us together for a retreat session, just a few hours in the afternoon, maybe a Friday afternoon or something like that. And then a work session where we can actually get together, sit around the table and get some goals and visions from the councillors on what you want to see and how you want to see this city moving forward. And that's my objective for this month and next month is to figure out how we can compile those goals and visions and move them forward. And I know that there's a lot that we want to get done and a lot that we want to do quickly. It just takes us time to get the ball rolling, but I think that those two elements are very, very important for this council and for all of us in moving forward.
Do you think after this good discussion, it sounds to me, I mean, here, everything you said and I appreciate that, and I also appreciate everyone's good questions. It sounds to me though that maybe we're not really ready to lease this space because we may need more space. We may need a different space. We don't have the people hired yet, so you may be hiring more people in a shorter span. And I think, is there any downside for just waiting a little bit until you get the next person hired and we do sit down and look at a forecast and then make a better decision? Would there be a harm to you for doing that instead of approving this short-term measure?
I think it would just be a hardship for the staff that we hire. But on that, I think, I mean, when I spoke to the property manager, this office is open now. And she was saying that if we needed additional space in the future, she may have a larger suite opening up, but it won't open up for like another year or so. And we might be in a position, if we're leasing this space, to.
Transfer, give the transfer term to the bigger suite, only same condition.
Before that you got interrupted, I think what you're, what I'm hearing you say though is there's a lot of mites. And so what I'm asking you and what I'm asking the council is, I'm just listening very carefully to what you're saying. And it sounds to me possibly there would not be harm in waiting just a small amount of time, especially you said the place isn't even vacant yet until April. So could we wait, you know, even a thirty days? Maybe you're going to be hiring your public information officer and then you'll have a little bit more data in thirty days from now.
Yeah, the property manager has some interest on the suite. I think she'd rather go with us because we're a sure thing. And I, I think that they feel very good about entering into a lease with the city and that would be their preference. But if we don't take it, they're going to give it to the other person that's inquire, or the other groups that we're inquiring. But if we're out that office space, that's really convenient and close. And I don't have any other options right now.
I have a question. I don't, for some reason I don't have this resolution in front of me. I haven't translated it. So I don't know exactly. No, I, yeah, I know where that is. I'm just, what does it say? Because you said it allows us to negotiate the lease. Has, I've had some good questions about making sure some items were added in the lease. Maybe that transferred into, I don't remember all the questions the committee has, but there were a few that you said, yeah, those should be in. I think we have the whole term.
Yeah, you have the whole term of their lease.
Right, right, right. So I just still, can you amend this still? Are we voting on this lease agreement?
Yeah.
So none of those, are those items in here?
You can read through it. I didn't see anything in there about subleasing.
I just read through it.
Okay. And is there something in there that allows for us to move into a larger suite? If that shows up any.
You can ask that to be an amendment added to your lease.
Like is it possible?
Well, hold on.
Get the diagram up so everybody can see what we're talking about.
Diagram for the.
Is it this?
Catherine.
Yeah, where there's a, oops, not just there, but.
Can we have a minute? I want to look at, I haven't had a chance to read it up.
Oh, okay.
Or maybe our legal counsel could read the lease and let us know what it says. It's very long.
Yeah, if there are terms you would like Mike to add, we can, we can do that. We can say the lease, but with the instruction that for him to, if the additional term would allow him to basically trade this space for a larger space if it only becomes available within a year. Because, because this is there for, we can, you know, they can, they can have that. And I can't imagine that they would object if they have a larger space because they want to. But we could, your approval could be contingent upon him speaking that or any other term that you want to have.
Well, if, if, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mike, but I heard you say that they would be eager to rent to us as a sure thing. Then I would negotiate away kind of an escape clause. It's not interdependent on them, you know, finding another tenant. Because they, I would have something that says that they would let us out on certain amount of notice, which gives them plenty of time to find another tenant, like thirty days' notice, or let you go month to month or something like that. Because locking yourself in for three years, anything can happen in three years. The market could get better, the market could get worse. And I don't want to see us paying for a space that we can't occupy because we can't get out of the lease. I think that's wasteful.
Leaks can go up in three years. I think this wasn't a five-year lease. That's what I would have done with all the properties I'd ever owned. I want to lock people in for long term. I'd say, I would like to make a motion that we vote on this.
Are we going to add any terms or are we just going to vote on, put it as is?
The way it is. I'd say leave it the way it is. It's vague enough where we can add terms later if they want to give us more space. What we're doing here is we're giving our, we're putting ourselves in a position to move into a little bit larger place if we need the space. And if we don't need the space, then we get out of this after three years. They should have done a five release. That's, this is a gift. I'm not kidding you.
He's not wrong.
It's a good deal.
For a vote, do you need hands or do you want to do a roll call?
Well, I would need a motion to approve. I think we had a motion to vote, but I would need that.
Motion to approve?
When you look at the diagram of the property, it looks like there is potential to have a lot.
Yeah, it's got, there's more of this space.
Yeah, and there's open, I mean, you know, maybe these guys move out or these guys move out or, you know. Do you know which property or which suite that she thinks that would be available in a year?
She didn't specify. She just said, this is what I have available. Because I was here just walking by and we saw the real estate sign and we knew that we were looking for space. We actually were inquiring at the corner when the real estate one was popping up Beijing or popping up. And then around the same time, we saw this one pop up in the Canyon Building. So we went in to invest. And that was their property manager and before.
It looks like there's like an empty room from the street that you walk into where you get.
It's internal.
Potentially, we could have all that space?
The lobby area.
We'll have it open now.
So like the public could hoiter in the lobbies. There's chairs, there's restrooms, there's waterfunds.
Not a good idea.
Yes. I mean, but the office space, I'm trying to make the office space so that it retains as quiet a space as possible so that people can focus on their reports and for their job. job-specific uses. And so that's why I believe my two best candidates for that office right now are probably Mira and Matt, my finance manager and my planner, and then maybe move a building code in there as well, and they can share that space because they're only here on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They oftentimes need a large table to roll out plans and go through and check plans. And so being that space set up for that sort of thing works well with planning and building codes together. And then Mira can have the other one and possibly even put the PIO person in that position either, or either the PIO or one of the other employees. We have a motion and a second.
And then before we move to, I'm just going to disclose, I am a real estate licensed real estate agent, but I don't do commercial real estate, and I have no affiliation with North Rim Properties. All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor. Raise your hands, good? Or you, okay, hands. opposed?
Six, one, zero.
Thank you. Moving on to ten C, we have R two zero two five dash zero two, a resolution regarding eminent domain. Mr. Weston.
This resolution is designed to address some of the concerns that we've heard about the use of eminent domain on the southwest or the east-west corridor, the southern east-west corridor and the urban growth boundary. I brought a map in here, and I'm happy to kind of illustrate where that's at. Councilor Kazemirski asked for the map. If you indulge me a moment, I'll pull it out, sort it out on the front table there. This is our con plan and TSP map for the Kingston Parish planning area. Everyone can see it. I'm not sure if you can or not.
Is there a digital version of this?
Not right now. I do have it digitally, but it's pretty heavy PDF, and it'll freeze our system. So the southern corridor, the southern east-west corridor that you see mentioned in the resolution from one hundred and thirty-seventh over to one hundred and fiftieth here, this is the one hundred and fiftieth spot here, over to one hundred and thirty-seventh here, is the area that has been called into question, that people have voiced their concerns that the city is going to go in and use eminent domain. And we've consistently said we have no interest in using eminent domain, we have no intent of using eminent domain, and it's always in our best interest to work with the property owners for a negotiated purchase and sale. The other thing that I just want to point out is that these areas, this road, this pathway doesn't occur unless the property owners along that pathway decide to develop. So those road improvements, that road corridor, it doesn't happen until those property owners actually decide to sell that property to a developer or to develop that property. Sometimes they can just turn the property over, sell it to another person. That person lives there their entire life, never moves on, never creates a road, never does anything. We've seen examples of this across the United States where even if you go across the river in To Walatin, along the To Walatin Greenway Trail that they have, the Ice Age Tonkin Trail that they have, the trail will go, and then a large property owner who hasn't sold or doesn't, has no interest in selling, the trail will just dead-end or go up to the main street and go around that property. That's exactly what our plan does here. And so what this resolution would say is just, basically says that the council is not going to use eminent domain on this portion here, and that in, when our TSP comes up for periodic review, which will be in seven years from the date of adoption, which is 2030, it was adopted in 2023, it'll come up for periodic review in 2030, this council can reopen our TSP because we should qualify again for some grant money to do periodic review. That would give us a shot to come in here and redo a relook, and if the numbers change or something else, or something, maybe we're offline and drunk by then. Maybe the numbers change, and maybe our goals change, maybe everything else, we can relook and restructure, we can reevaluate our STCs, our master plan, our TSP. And that's what's in the resolution. That purpose of the resolution is to basically reaffirm that the city council has no intention of using eminent domain on this.
I have two questions. One, why isn't the resolution including all of King City that we're not going to use eminent domain? Why are we discriminating against some and favoring others?
Fair question.
And my second question, since I've interrupted, I want to know why we can't also take this opportunity to do a relook at the TSP. So I have two questions.
Okay. I'll answer your first one, why not? Right now, we have development agreements with the new home company on some of these areas, and we often enter into development agreements when development occurs. Those development agreements basically put the city on the hook for acquiring right-of-way if necessary to allow that development to occur. So if we block all eminent domain from occurring, there's no guarantee that we can meet our housing needs and our housing requirements or the needs of the city. So take for instance, we get to a position right now where we have this corner development up here, talking about building, and this whole corner at one hundred and thirty-seventh. And we know that John and Larry at the corner are interested in selling, right?
I'm following you so far, but here's the thing. We have, under the United States Constitution, we have the Fourteenth Amendment where we have to give equal opportunity and equal treatment to all. The constitutional right, Oregon also has a constitution. So if you're going to say you're not going to do eminent domain for one, you've got to do eminent domain for all, or you just have to say that you'll just do it piece for piece. Otherwise, I need a better explanation than a development agreement.
Great. Honestly, I think it's not in the city's best interest to prohibit eminent domain because it's a tool in the city's toolbox, right?
It's your resolution. I'm just asking the question.
It was, it was asked because there's concern that we're going to use eminent domain on this particular corridor. That's the only corridor that people have illustrated a concern with.
People have illustrated a concern about eminent domain on other areas like Edgewater?
Yes. So the Edgewater corridor is
So that's not the only concern that you've had from an area that you've already threatened to take eminent domain?
So if we want to talk about the Edgewater corridor and the property acquisition or anything like that
I'm going to talk about all of King City. I have to disclose that I live in Edgewater, and so I don't want to make it just about Edgewater. I do want, I am concerned, though, when I hear language, and you just put me through discrimination training a minute ago, that we are discriminating against some and we are favoring others. And I think that is completely unconstitutional, and I don't think it's fair, and I don't, I think it would open the door for a lot of lawsuits to the city, which I think we all want to avoid.
No, I can't argue with, with what you're saying, and I'm not trying to say that that's not the case.
It's a concern. I think it's a grave concern, and I think we need to take what I'm saying seriously.
But I would caution the council is that you, you as a council can make a determination. But you as a council also can't bind future councils, right? So when something happens that is outside of our purview or outside of our control or outside of our perfect vision of the future, that is something beyond comprehension at this point in time, something we didn't think about, right? When something like that happens, this council can't bind a future council, and this council may want to change their mind at a later date. And the resolution that's before you, it's a resolution. It's a commitment from this council saying that you're not going to use eminent domain.
Who directed the resolution? Because I know that I wasn't told that you were even putting this resolution together, so the council didn't even direct a resolution. So who directed you to put this resolution together?
It was with the mayor, and this is after a conversation with Mr. Olson. So I had a two-hour conversation with Mr. Olson about his prior resolution that he was trying to produce. And so we talked about it, talked with the mayor, we sat down, we put those ideas, those concepts into this resolution and are bringing it forward to the council.
But the mayor doesn't have the power unilaterally to put a resolution together without the okay of the city council. Don't you agree with that?
That's why we're probably here. The staff will prepare, so the staff would prepare the resolution and bring it to the council for consideration. And that's what this whole intention was. And the intention of this resolution is nothing more than to say, this is our commitment that we're not, we have no intention of using eminent domain on this lower corridor between these areas.
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just have a question, because there was, I mean, most of the community spoke directly towards this resolution. So why do you think they don't feel like this is hitting the mark?
I can, I can say why I feel like they don't think this is hitting the mark. So part of our issue is that we can't prove a negative. So I can't prove that a future city council might not use a tool that they're legally allowed to use. So when people say, well, definitively say that the city won't do this, I can't say that the city won't at some point in the future use a tool or not use a tool. So in Oregon, and we say, current, the council can't bind a future city council, the law on that, the cases on that issue are from the early twentieth century. There are instances where outgoing city councils, in one instance gave a county administrator a job for life, and in another instance said that there was only one architectural firm of record that could be used in the city. And the city councils that came in are, were like, we don't want that county administrator, we don't want that, we don't want only one architecture firm to be able to do the work. And so these laws were developed that you can't, you can't bind a future city council without specific constitutional exceptions. So for instance, the reason that public bonding is in the Oregon Constitution is because those constitutional amendments had to be developed because when you authorize a project and bond it over a thirty-year period, you are binding the future city council in order to pay those bonds. So full-facing credit bonds or revenue bonds, however you bonded it, the city's on the hook for those in the future. So within, in the instances where they're allowed to inform, they're allowed to bind, they're separately set forth. So I'm not aware of any instance where King City has actually used eminent domain. There are times where for someone to realize the tax advantage, we have to threaten to use eminent domain. There's some 501(c)(3) organizations that show that they're meeting their charitable purpose and need a letter from us, but I'm not aware of any instance. That said, you never know, the priority of one city council can completely change with an election. So if you, the rub on this is how can you, as a city council, demonstrate to the community that you don't intend to use eminent domain for a specific property that people are very concerned about?
I think it would be better, council, if we would make a resolution that says we won't use eminent domain on any property in King City. And since you just said that's not going to bind a future council, what is the harm of making that resolution throughout King City?
I mean, if that, if that's, if that's the route you guys want to go down.
Well, I think what you're saying, that we're trying to appease our community, and by only designating one area and not others, you're appeasing part of the community, and then you're discriminating against the other part.
Well, whether you use eminent domain or not is entirely up to you as a council.
Right, but I mean, there's no harm in making a blanket. If we're going to have a resolution, there's absolutely no legal ramification if we amend the resolution to include all of King City that we have no intention of using eminent domain. Well, I'm, well, I'm not saying illegal counsel, because it is really a legal question, because we have the Fifth Amendment is what you can use eminent domain. You've got the Fourteenth and the Equal Protection Clause under the same constitution. We've got to treat everyone equally.
So Oregon's land use laws actually have been challenged using the Fourteenth Amendment. We have a very unique land use system that a lot of some people develop their property, other people don't. Most recently that I'm aware of, as far as the urban and rural reserves, it happened after 2010, and all those efforts were unsuccessful. Both a federal judge as well as the DLT staff and LTC board determined that the Fourteenth Amendment protections do not apply to Oregon's land use system.
I have a, sorry. I heard you say that we can't, it's basically up to the developers, we can't tie their hands. But part of our resolution is, says that the intent of this council to require developers to designate all necessary property acquisitions, the east-west corridor as properties voluntarily develop, through voluntary negotiations and fair market transactions. So why wouldn't we be able to require developers to do that for anywhere, for all the places?
We do, typically, but, you know, we do.
So I guess I'm still just confused, like, why we're designating this to one specific spot. And also my, what I was hearing from the community is more questions about the TSP relook, and this puts that off to 2030. So what, how much would it actually cost to do a relook, even if there were minor changes to the TSP, before five years? Because it sounds like that's kind of a big concern.
I can tell you what we spent on it last time, which was, we spent five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Creating the whole thing. Okay, so
And then you also had, the problem with it is it's a can of worms. You have your TSP, your system development charges, and your master plan, and they're all interwoven, your con plan as well. So you can't just do one without relooking and reopening everything else, the codes, municipal codes, it's all intertwined. And so you start unraveling one, you have to unravel them all. And that's why we've always said if we needed to do this, it needed to be a whole relook again. And then you're looking at, we spent one and a half million dollars to develop this thing through grants. We're not going to qualify for those grants for another segment. That's what we've said.
But here's the thing, my understanding is you had a conversation with former councillor Olson, so I'm sure that you and the councillors are aware, that the King City voters do not feel that we are handling this in a transparent way. They are asking the council to please take a relook at the TSP. That is what the voters have voted me to do, to come here, to ask the council to get the credibility and the trustworthiness back from the voter base. And I feel that we're not doing that, and I feel that that is what is causing a lot of this consternation, that we're being admonished, and the three of us that just got elected are basically being told to just shut up and put up. But I think what you need to be hearing is that the voters have asked us to come here, and you shouldn't be shooting the messengers. We're messengers of the voters. And the voters have asked us, and are continuing to ask us, ask the council, and you as our city manager, and you as our city attorney, to actually adhere, not just listen, but adhere to what the voters feel they need to have a comfort. So on two fronts, I'd like to make a motion to amend your resolution to include a relook of the TSP now, and to include eminent domain will apply to all of King City.
So you're, you're asking that we would apply for the grants from Metro in order to relook at the TSP?
I would. Or I would ask you to tell the residents why we can't do it. I don't think at this point, I think it's priceless. I know it's expensive to do a relook, but it's more expensive to have the voters be so disgruntled that they continue to want to recall every single one of us. And that includes me, Rachel, Vince, and the rest of us. Because if we don't deliver the message that we have been voted to deliver, they will recall all of us one by one. If we want to avoid that, which I think we do, it's imperative, and it's priceless for us, to do a relook at the TSP and to have a motion that actually satisfies the voter base and brings back the credibility, the transparency, the ethics, and the openness that they're asking us to do. And I have to say, while I'm speaking, it's really frustrating to be shut down, not being able to make an amendment or add to an agenda. I'm not even permitted to add to our agenda. I'm told if I say anything more, I'm going to be escorted out. I'm here on the basis of voters who have asked me to speak for them, and I have a duty to do that. We all do. Doesn't mean that we're not getting along. It doesn't mean that It doesn't mean that we're saying anything wrong. It doesn't mean that we're trying to cause trouble. It means we're trying to do what we've been elected to do. I hope people understand that.
Mr. Ross, did you say that there are grants that can be?
Well, I have, I have, I've made a, I've made a motion. Do I have a second? There's a motion on the floor.
To amend the resolution.
To amend the resolution.
To include.
To include a relook to the TFP and to include all of King City that we will not be using eminent domain.
So we would have to bring that back at a different meeting, because that's.
No, let's do that.
So should we, what do we do then?
That's for next month.
We did the Metro process to get grants, usually technical. Those usually cities will do the work, and then at a later date, they will get a grant out of the works. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't necessarily get a grant, it's just that there are a lot of cities in the region. So, but that doesn't mean that we can't apply for a grant.
I think it's important that we do our best to listen to what our community wants us to do. So if we can move the table.
We can have that as an agenda in the future.
Okay, well, that would be good. I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm ready for you.
There are a number of people here who have been meeting with mediators representing new home and et cetera. And I guess there are a few people on city council who are privy to that. And the rest of, myself, I guess, is who I can speak for. I haven't a clue of where the conversations have gone, what expectations are. I don't know. And somehow that puts me at a great disadvantage in trying to make any kind of a decision.
Yeah, we don't, I don't either.
I'm just listening to open forum, just listening to people.
But I think, but I think I have a motion pending. If you want me to table it, I'm happy to do it.
Can you recall the last motion for a new motion?
Yes, me.
Okay, so we will recall the current motion.
Recall the current motion, and make a motion to table it, so that we can develop it to adhere to the wishes of our constituency and our voter base. But I would like to say that I'd like to make sure that we add the provisions that I'm suggesting into the next round of resolutions.
Would you, there are a couple, I mean, I will contact Metro. Would you want to do a work session and potentially bring in Metro's staff?
Yes, please.
Sure. We could do that, but also, I want to make sure that we are, I think we should invite some people from the community to give us some feedback as well.
On the Metro grant.
On the Metro grant, and not just the favorites that get to meet with the developer. I think we need to bring in a new crew, and maybe like Jan and some other people.
I would like to know what the overall, our overall, overarching goal is of you. Because I don't really know. I just know that I get emails saying, well, I object to this, I object to that, but I don't see any solutions. I just, criticism for not doing my job. And so I would like to know what, what your real agenda is. What you want, what you want, what you want from us.
We're not going to bring, I've had some citizens email me and say they don't want us to bring in favoritism for a word, of bringing in someone from outside in while we're discussing. So if you want to talk to someone after the meeting, fine. But during the meeting, we want to be able to do our discussion amongst the council.
I'll apply it now.
No, I like, but, but I don't want to bring anyone in.
No, I was going to, I was going to suggest to Jan, if Gary Woods, who spoke first about what their expectations were, if he were to put something in writing about what his expectations were, to your question, would that satisfy you?
Sure. I would like somebody to say what their expectations are, rather than throwing darts.
Okay, that's all I was going to suggest. Is that okay with you?
So, the, yes?
Mr. Mayor, is that, is that okay with you? I didn't want to upset you, but I'm just trying to, trying to appease my colleague here.
Yeah, no, if she wants to have a conversation, yeah.
Is that what?
And get that information.
The outside of here, obviously.
Yeah, not during the meeting.
Not, not right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not appropriate conversation right this minute, yes.
Do we get the motion, or do we need to recall and do it again? Or we're just, we're just to discuss the work session?
I'd ask for a revision.
And I think it's important that we discuss some of the elements that Councillor Barryman had requested, and some of the decisions on.
So we will, I guess, pull the motion, table this resolution to a workshop, to be named in probably maybe the beginning of next council meeting?
Whenever it is.
Okay.
Can we possibly do that in the meeting, because we've already mentioned potential for future workshops, calls, A and M retreats, so it might be interesting if we can pull out our calendars and maybe set some dates.
Can we do that? Can we do that?
And part of it too, is it is coming up for Metro. I'm not sure what the grant cycle is, so when, you know.
Yeah, he said he was going to look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Can we pump that to the end? Go through and set up?
Yeah, he's going to do it at the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. Cool, I didn't hear. Thank you. So we get to move on from this one? Yeah, we're going to table that.
I'll do a motion, a motion to table.
Second, second. Motion and second, all in favor?
All in favor.
I think it's unanimous.
Okay, moving on now to 10D, Resolution 2025-03, approving referrals to the electors' police levy.
So this is a continuation of the current police levy that was passed in 2020 with the five-year levy that is going to be coming to an end. There's some statutory requirements that all that language you see in there is from the statute. And then if voters were to authorize this, in the past, this has been used for communication, training, and officer salary. When Washington County updates their technology, then for King City, in order to participate, and for their officers to be able to communicate with us, we need to have basically the same upgraded technology that they have. So the, the kind of, they upgraded their radio systems five years ago. That was kind of the impetus for us increasing our prior levy. And then they kind of, they're kind of on the cutting edge always with technology. So for us to interface with them, we need to have the technology.
Is this resolution to just put it on the ballot?
Yes.
So we're not, so that's all we're voting on?
Right, you, you can, if you put it on the ballot, then it would appear in May. And then the members of the public could choose whether to authorize this. We're not proposing an increase.
That was my question, is it the same?
Right, and every other, every other agency is increasing. We're, we're just trying to maintain progress.
It sounds good to me.
Going to make a motion to vote on this resolution. Second.
A vote to approve.
To approve, thank you.
You need a hand, hand vote, or a, yeah, gelford, second?
Yeah, okay.
Hand vote?
So once this is on the ballot, then neutrality rules apply to the city, so we will. I need to make sure any communications that come from staff are, are neutral and not advocacy. Though you as elected officials are expected to advocate, so those neutrality rules do not apply to you. You're free to interface with folks in the community and express your views on whether they should vote guns or not. Jan, can I back up a minute, please?
Thank you.
Before we count the votes?
Now, do I speak?
Yes.
Just out of abundance of caution, I will recuse myself from this vote, as my husband is a police officer, even though this would benefit a class of people. I will recuse myself.
Thank you. Can we do a re-vote on that?
Okay, we have a re-vote of the same.
Sorry.
Are we abstaining?
I'm recusing.
Excluding, yeah. Abstaining would be a good joke, yeah.
Abstaining and recusing are two different things.
All right, you got that? Thank you. Moving on, we have 10E, we have R2025-05, a resolution to modify and replace charter committee formation.
So as requested, we went back and we added two positions for formerly elected individuals that do not necessarily have to reside within the city limits. Added that in here, councillor Chris, you got four, two and eight, I believe, Maxwell, you thought.
Yeah, did you do this?
And everyone thought this morning. So we threw out that additional information. This was a redraft of Resolution 2024-06, and essentially just adds that clarification.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions on this. I've had a chance to rethink about this. You know, writing a charter is really an important endeavor. I mean, we're barely following our charter, and it's now, there's a lot of debate, a lot of lawsuits, riots. We need people who actually know how to write a charter. And we need to set goals for what we want, which I think the city council should be preparing some directives before we have a committee start writing a charter. I think it's imperative to have our city attorney also give guidance to the council on how the charter should be addressed. And then those expectations and parameters, and even like a project map, should be then disseminated to a charter committee. And I just think we've put the horse, the cart before the horse. We've got the committee, but we don't have the parameters or the framework in order to have that. So I'd like to really have a chance to work in another work session, to create a framework before we start adding and talking about a committee. I guess I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, table this, and to have a, add to our work session, as our project map of our city attorney really guides us, as city council members, of how to write a charter, what the new legal ramifications are in 2025 and beyond, and what are the things that we really need to focus on? Do we have to rewrite our entire charter, or are there sections of the charter that need to be updated? Are we starting from scratch? There's just, I have a million questions, and I don't want to take the time up tonight. But I think we really need to have a directive from our city attorney, and from you, and from the council, to give the committee direction before we start talking about a committee.
I mean, we've been certainly.
Okay, I also just have a question. I've had more time to think about who we're putting on this committee. It says that we're going to have two members from the Planning Commission. Since our Planning Commission allows for members from the urban growth boundary, I think that we should have that language in this as well, where we could include, because we've included, we said all of King City, but I think urban growth boundary is technically different, because that's the language used in the Planning Commission, so.
I think the reason that it's written in the manner in which it is, and most cities are this, is that it's registered, they're registered voters within King City, they're King City residents, because this is part of the coverage of King City residents. And that's one of the stipulations, you know, we were making an exception for formerly elected, because if you get somebody who's been through this, or like a mayor or somebody else, they would have that.
But the Planning Commission allows for you, the urban growth boundary, right?
It does, yes. It allows up to two, I think.
Right, so I'm just saying, since we're allowing two members from the Planning Commission, and one of those could be from the urban growth boundary, I think that updating our language to include that.
Yeah, that might be more appropriate. Can you repeat? Yes, two members from the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so.
Those two members from the Planning Commission should have to be members.
Not should, it just could. So right now, the, the language doesn't, it says a King City resident, but our Planning Commission allows for members from the urban growth boundary.
Right.
Since this membership says we can have two members, or should be made up of two members from the Planning Commission, I think our language should be updated that it could be King City residents or urban growth boundary residents. So those aren't disqualified.
We have four people on, four out of the nine people be non-residents, and I think.
Not, not a miss, because it's still just two.
We have two former elected.
Wouldn't it, would it not, um?
We have two former elected and potentially two planning.
No, we could just have one of each. Couldn't we just update it to be one of each? Because right now, it's allowing for two former elected. Why don't we just make it? Yeah, why don't we just make it one former elected, one urban growth. I think if we, if we have people on the Planning Commission that are from urban growth boundaries, then we're eliminating them from being able to be on this, if our language doesn't include that, correct?
That could go either way, but I really think we need a framework. I mean, this is the problem. We don't have a framework, and I want to see, are we rewriting the entire charter from A to Z, and we're just scrapping it freely?
You and the committee?
Maybe that's the question, we just know, and it's somebody in this.
By what they're going to do.
But I think we need some guidance on some legalities on that, because they don't have that. So we, we just need to have a little work session, to have some, some format, and then we can go.
So there are some challenges there in what your proposal, Councillor Barryman, because some of the issues that are being proposed would potentially present conflicts of interest for you council, like pay or compensation for, right? That's why, that was one of the primaries that our charter committee, because right now, our charter prohibits any sort of compensation for you councilors.
But we don't have to, we don't have to give them guidance on that, they can add things. But we just need to, I'm asking for a framework, not all the pieces.
I think, ma'am, I don't want to interrupt.
That's the practice frameworks that we can find.
I think the point, though, is, I agree with what you're saying, but I think the point of creating the committee is if we did a work session before, then we would have to do it again when we had committee members join us. We would do the work twice. So I agree with you, there needs to be an outline of what we're doing and setting, but I think that would be committee session number one, is to set those guidelines and ask Peter those questions to make sure that we're doing that. So we would create our outline of that process as committee one. I don't think there'd be use of having a work session beforehand, because we would literally have to do it again for everybody we've included now into the committee.
I hear you, but I just feel like without a project map, and without a real understanding of what you're asking these people to do, and they're not schooled in the area of writing a charter, we're spinning wheels, and I can imagine, look, I've done this before in another city, it turned into a nightmare. The volunteers didn't have a clue what they were doing. They spent an enormous amount of time, and then when they presented it to our council, he said, this stuff is not even legal. Why would we want to go around in circles like that, instead of just getting some parameters so that the people actually can use their time wisely? Because I understand we want it to be neutral and all that, and I'm all for that, trust me, I am. But I've also seen it become a disaster without some guardrails, and then we need some guardrails. Absolutely need those before you start people spinning their wheels.
So the staff, that's what we do. So we would end up working with the lead Oregon cities, and the other cities from around here, to develop a proposed charter, right? We would develop that charter, but first, what we would do is get together with the charter committee and hear what they want to add to our charter, or what they think the city needs or want. Then we go back, we consult the lead Oregon cities, and the other cities, and we draft a copy of a proposed charter, or charter amendment.
Okay, who's we, who's we drafting?
The staff, myself, Max, Ronnie, everyone in this building, working with lead Oregon cities, City of Tiger cities.
But doesn't the staff, doesn't the staff have a potential conflict of interest? Because the staff, you're giving yourselves power and things like that, and the charter, that may be a conflict of interest?
So ultimately.
It sounds like it could be.
Ultimately, the voters ratify any charter. So the context that this came up in was that there were prior city commissioners, and this is not just King City, there's a lot of cities around Oregon that are talking. that are talking about whether councilors should receive a stipend on other financial remuneration. And my advice to those councilors was that we would, the best practice is to form a charter committee to see whether that's something that a charter committee would want to consider, because for a city council that has tips with that, it'd be a conflict of interest. So that was in consultation with the O G E C and with others as far as, okay, how do we do this and insulate our council from liability? And so that was the main exhibit of the charter amendment. So we said at the time, it would probably make sense to look at other provisions and make sure that those reforms stay law. So when I've done charter amendments in other cities, what we've done is we've looked at some of these things that have updated, so items like urban renewal, to make sure that the language in our charter conforms with state law.
I understand that.
Pause, sorry. Ronnie needs a second, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, just made a motion, I need a second.
I made a motion for a work session to get some parameters to these amendments to the charter committee before we vote on this resolution.
Your second?
Well, that's another point of discussion. We're going to have to create parameters in any way, whether we resolve to pass this resolution or not. And it's somewhat new to not pass the resolution, because part of the process, we have to go by the process, I think. And I think, and I know you have intimate experience doing it in another city, and there was somebody here in the audience who has left who has had intimate experience doing it for the city of Tiger D, you probably have too.
I think since we're, sorry, I think since we're going to discuss a little bit more, let's rescind the motion and we can go back.
And so I guess my point is that.
Just letting her.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
I'm listening. Go ahead. No, I want to hear what you have to say, I'm listening.
And so I guess, I'm probably in favor of passing this resolution. And I don't know whether we can sort of add a work session to the march as an agenda item, a work session to go through this and to go through the.
I'm open to that.
A couple of things, because I don't think that trying to flesh out everything that we think.
But what I'm saying, it makes sense to you, right? We just need to get some guardrails and some.
Oh, absolutely.
And just have a little bit of framework.
Right.
Listening to council, we're not going to be adding or giving them suggestions on the actual topics, because they have to come up with it, so there's no conflict of interest. But like, for an example, council just explained that they have to see amendments, and they have to be in compliance with the law. The charter, a lot of these volunteers, the names that I've seen already, have zero experience on writing a charter. They're going to need some guidance.
Yeah.
That's all I'm suggesting.
But I do know two of them that have extensive experience.
Well, that's helpful, but.
I know, two out of nine is not, does not have a committee.
And if we're going to keep adding more, and then these people have no experience, it's going to turn into chaos. I've already been down this road.
Then I totally appreciate your experience.
I'm trying to be helpful.
No, I agree. Any other discussion before?
Also, at the same time.
Wait, so mayor's saying something.
I was going to say, is there any other discussion? I think the gist of the conversation was approve the resolution with the addition of a work session. You add?
I can live with that.
Okay, so then I, sorry, I can't make, you want to make a motion?
I will amend my own motion, Ronnie, to approve this resolution with the addendum that we will have a work session. Prior to the committee commencing. How's that?
I'll second that.
I just have one, but I made it on two B. It needs to be up to four community members holding their firm players in the city, because we already have the two planning commissioners, the legislative committees, and then the two former elected, and four, maybe nine. It was a body of nine originally.
I think that's a lot of people who don't know anything.
What was the edit?
Uh, two B, instead of saying six, it needs to say four.
Development before he tells us, okay, that you. And there's a ton of best practices.
Exactly.
Yes.
But having our council give us authority.
Is everyone okay with that amendment?
I'm fine with it. Okay.
All right, I'll call for a vote.
Wait a minute, hold on, I do have a question. Because that's assuming that we will have two formerly elected officials on there? I think this just says and/or, so it could be, we could have two, but I think if you change it, then it mandates two.
Right. It tends to add up to two.
Yes, like it's an and/or.
Or up to six. So it is kind of correct, because it could be either or, right?
Right, so it's just been, the remaining six can be made up of, it could be two or not, right? That's how I read it.
So we could technically, because of the and/or, we could leave it as this.
Just as it is.
Just as long as everyone knows that the body is nine.
Yeah.
Right. And it says that at the top.
Are you thinking that?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Okay, we got it? Uh, we, do you need a roll call vote or a hand vote? All in favor? Okay.
I was listening to you. I was listening.
That was a motion by Councilor Braverman and seconded by Counselor Tyso.
Yes, he seconded mine.
I missed on the chief today.
We're going to have a work session.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number eleven, a police chief's report. I don't know if the chief happily is out, okay. Number twelve, city manager's report.
So in my report today, I have a few things to announce. The writ, Sanders Cunningham, has been committed to Washington County. Our legal defense team is putting together the arguments, I believe, that will be submitted by the end of the week. The, we had Mr. Olson in earlier, I want to say, week or week and a half ago now, submitting a potential recall, moving that forward. So I would be surprised if out there and others potentially circling up stuff for that. Other than that, we have put out position announcements for the additional police officer, the sergeant's position, and the public information officer. So all three of those positions are currently open, and we're trying to fill those. We've been in audit, going back and forth with our auditors over the last couple of months. Our auditor that has been on with us for the past six months or so is now moving on from Poly Rogers again. So we're once again in another situation where our auditor is leaving. I believe most of the work has been completed, though, so the new person coming in, hopefully doesn't have to start all over, but this is becoming a thing. And I think that the council needs to potentially consider an RFP here that's spring, potentially find another audit firm. Unfortunately, we've been in Poly Rogers for a while, they've done it right, and they've worked for us for a long time, but.
They've had.
At the time being, it's turning into a thing, we can discuss that later. It's just the consistent turnover and the lack of consistency for us has put us behind the eight ball on too many things, and it's really cost us some continuity. So I think it's time to address that. Same with the situation with Mike Moore previously. In prior years, it got to a point where the continuity of services was just falling apart, and we weren't getting the kind of services that we need for a growing city. And the demand became too much for the nail, and I think we're getting to that point now. So unfortunately, these are the growing pains that I mentioned from time to time. We're growing in staff, growing in accountability, growing in all these different elements. And as we grow, we're going to need to modernize and upgrade.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I don't want to be impolite or out of order, but my question is this. My understanding of both the municipal code and the charter is that the city council has to direct you and our city attorney in taking any action, especially legal action. You just said a minute ago, if I didn't hear you correctly, please correct me. You said that you have decided that you're going to respond to the writ. The city council has not voted to have you respond to the writ. And in fact, at the last meeting, I purposely tried to do a rule of order saying, "Let's just reopen the thirty-five days and do it by the book, so we can avoid a writ." How have you decided to go ahead and respond to the writ without any instruction from the city council?
When we get to, we have to respond.
We don't have to respond, we can capitulate, do it right, and then the thing goes away, and we don't have to spend taxpayer money.
So we're, this is a discussion, I am in an executive session that's occurring next.
Well, I know we're going to discuss it, but we can't make a ruling in the executive session. We're not allowed to come to a decision. Shouldn't we decide now, with the city council on the bench, whether we want to move forward with this?
We haven't noticed that, as mentioned.
Well, I've tried several times to amend our agenda to put it on, but even though our municipal code does allow for amending an agenda, I've not been able to amend our agenda, I've been shut down each time. I've tried to do it correctly and by the book, but I've been shut down every time. So I'm just asking politely, don't you think the municipal code and our charter require us as a bench to decide whether we want to move forward and respond to the lawsuit, or do we want to capitulate, start the thirty-five days, put the notice in the Oregonian, and avoid taxpayer money being used for any legal reason in this situation? That's all I'm asking.
This is a situation that we can really, I think that we can have this conversation. I can explain some things to you in our executive session. That's why we booked the executive session, so that we could talk about this.
I just want to say for the record, I think it would be a better approach to avoid extending any more legal fees, even if you think we have a defense. I think it would show a goodwill and also getting back our credibility and transparency with our voter base. So that's why I've been trying to get their attention on this, not to be disruptive or anything.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, we'll go on to councillors' reports. Counselor Krasnicki.
I don't really have anything to report. I just want to echo what Counselor Braverman said. It's unfortunate that you're not given the ability to amend the agenda, because it was also requested multiple times before this meeting to add agenda items that were also not added. So that's my report.
Thank you. Counselor Braverman?
Um, I was added to the, do you call it WACA, W C C C A?
Yeah, I think that's.
The nine-one-one operators. So I had the pleasure to go out and meet with the executive director, Mr. Bulkhovs, and had a great experience, learned a lot about our nine operators, a lot about our chief, who actually got the credibility that our chief of police has. He's in one of the, he's allowed to vote for the small cities. It's very impressive overall. The only other thing I would like to report is that I really would like to see that the city council members allow us new members to add agenda items to the agenda. Mayor, it gives us a chance to really work collaboratively with you. It shows that you are showing welcoming to us. Because it sounds, it feels like there's kind of like a voting block, where you guys are used to doing things a certain way, you want to keep going in that direction, and we feel like we're being left out. And then we feel like we should not have to ask you over and over again to, and then say, "Oh, no," or "We'll think about it." I think you should invite the collaboration, and I think you could help us set that tone, if you would be so kind to consider that.
Absolutely, I'm open to that. I'm open to discussions. Some of the tone of some of the emails sent is not good and not appreciated. I think that tone of some of the emails needs to come down, so we can work collaboratively. Thank you.
I think a lot of the tones are because we've been asking as nicely as we can, and we've been pretty much told no over and over again. After a while, it feels like you have to kind of escalate in order to get someone's attention, and we don't want to have to do that. So if we're all on the same page, that tone's better.
Well, right, we're all human, so the tone doesn't need to escalate to that. Phone call, you have my phone number, we've talked, pretty simple.
I know, and I have asked you in person, and all you said was, "I'll think about it," and you never got back to me.
I did get back to you.
No, you didn't say you would on that.
I'll send you the email.
You didn't get back to me and say, "I thought about it."
Okay. Set up, thanks. Counselor Tyso?
Sure. Um, yeah. It's something that I printed out for my husband, because he's from Mount Buck, Australia, and sometimes he can be rather abrupt, and I, so the little saying is, it's not what you say, but how you say it. And so when people have a lot of venom in the tone of voice, it's very difficult to cooperate. Now, I have four emails, and I brought them with me today, of which I've responded to all four of them from Patty Nichols. And so, and some of the things that she asked me, I can easily speak to, and others not so much. And the first one that I have in my hand is why open forum time limits are uneven, that some people can speak for a long time, and some people are cut off at their three-minute time period, and it does not, does not look like we are being even-handed. And so my response was, is I cannot explain all that happens at city council meetings. There are times I've raised my hand to speak and not been recognized. The meetings are conducted by the mayor or the president of the council in the absence of the mayor. All of the city council needs to be educated regarding proper decorum, to treat council members with respect, and to extend the same respect to citizens and other interested persons in attendance. I have suggested that the time allotted for open forum be extended, and that we change the format to have some back-and-forth dialogue, which must be respectful. I know I was told it was not a place for a debate, but I do not know how to have a meaningful conversation without some back-and-forth dialogue. The next one I have here is legal fees transparency. And in each of all four of these emails, she said, "Ms. Tyso, in your own words, explain." And I do not borrow words from other people, so I'm just going to put that on the record. You do, and will always get my words. I am sure Dan Brenner will share my response to him regarding this subject. He also wrote wanting to know about legal fees. Yes, a formal, as did Don Mobley. Yes, a formal request was made in November, and again in December and January. I do hope that at tomorrow's council meeting, there will be answers. Unfortunately, that was not brought up tonight. Um, one thing, one answer at January's meeting is that our city attorney has paid a monthly retainer and does not bill extra regardless of the hours she spends on our issues, but that is not the complete answer. I, too, am interested in seeing how much money has been devoted to legal issues and what the issues were over the past two years. The transparency is worth the effort to provide these answers. And this one is the one that's probably most difficult for me, because I've been accused of not standing up for the protection of others. And it says, "I do not know if you addressed the other councilors with these things, when these things happened or not." And we're talking about Melanie Sage Bear, and the other one is Carl Swanson. However, I will speak for myself. However, I will speak for myself. Melanie and I are on friendly terms, and I have visited with her because I was concerned for her welfare before and after the incident you are referring to. She is a valued neighbor and has done a lot of good for a lot of people. I do not mind saying this in public at tomorrow's council meeting. As to Carl Swanson, I did not speak because the information I had was not complete. In retrospect, I should have said that until the matter is settled by law enforcement, we should not bring it up. Again, I will say so publicly, and I did say it privately after the effect. My apology to you for not getting back to you sooner. I work in an accounting firm, and it is tax season, which means longer than usual hours. And that's it. That I wanted to put that as part of the record, so everybody knows what I have said and how I feel. And that's it, and I'll give this to you.
Thank you. Counselor RDT.
I got Kenny Mips. And the ones I couldn't answer, I sent to Jan Tysoe.
I hope you answered them. I said, I hope you answered them.
Valentine's Day. I need to get this away before Valentine's Day, because that was a crappy Valentine's gift. So I think we need to get this agenda out, because all the emails I got, I couldn't always answer, because I need to go do a little research, and I can't do research if I don't know what the question is until four days before council, and that's over a holiday weekend. So I think we need to figure out a way to get those agenda questions, agendas out prior to, I don't know if there's a holiday involved there, but that was bad timing. But if I'm going to do some research and answer these questions, and Jan, I did answer the questions, I didn't send them to you. But I did, if I'm going to answer questions without saying the typical, we're doing our best and all that, I need to be able to do some research. So we need to be able to get those agenda questions or agendas out sooner than a week, I think. I know that's hard, but two weeks would be a good period of time to be able to research that, go back and forth among council members and say, and check things out, ask questions before we get to this stage. Because we're here for three hours, and now we've got another, what, half an hour to talk? I got to go to Car Show tomorrow, so we got to get this going.
Thank you. Counselor Hartman, your name?
Sure. I wasn't copied on many emails, because I'm sure there's a lot of people who see my name on that written, think that I don't belong on this board, but I. One thing I was copied on in the past couple weeks, I just want to point out there, and full transparency, this impacts me directly, I live right next to King City Park. I wanted to talk about the Greenway Trail Plan, that's what it's called, right? The one in the power line, west side, thank you, my fault. There are two major points that I just want to put out there for everybody to think about. The first claim I saw is that it will have a negative impact to our home prices. Doing some research on the National Association of Realtors website, I actually think it's the counterpoint to that. On average, they have a website that talks about trails and greenways. On average, they raise home prices by three to five percent, some towards, sometimes up towards 15 percent. That same study has recently showed that there's no correlation to trails increasing time, and there's more of a health benefit to our community. So the claim that there is a negative impact to our home sales, and from what I can find, is actually false. Second, the second email that came out on the same topic is that this was an unwanted community ad, and nothing that the community has asked for. So I asked Mike to send me the survey that was done in 2020, the fall of 2020, and I have a bunch of points, I'm happy to read them, I will share this, I have it written down, I'll share it with you as well, Ronnie, for record. Actually, I disagree, the community has asked for all of this. Some of the comments that were made in Concerns of the City is lack of bicycle infrastructure, lack of sufficient lighting, lack of sidewalk and sidewalk access. The community has asked for future development considerations of improved walkability and mobility options, desire to connect in multi-use paths throughout King City, and support for safety improvements that protect all modes of transportation, specifically pedestrian, bike, and student safety. More specifically, to bike and pedestrian connections, there was a section that said, interested in continuing to improve connections for pedestrians and cyclists, including trails, enjoy current bike trails and would like more, and the general consensus is that community wants running paths near nature, interconnected regional trails between nearby cities, and more formal trails along the river. So again, what I ask, whether people want me on here or not, we'll see how the RIT turns out. Nobody wants to email me, that's fine, guys do what you want. But whether people believe that I should be here or not is, I don't have an opinion either way, but I do have a professional view of what's going on, and I do believe, I forgot the name of the last gentleman who joined in, so I apologize, there is an equitable solution to all of this. And again, I personally think that this will affect where my house is, so just know that I'm looking at this in a very different light, that some of you aren't even on that path. So again, I'm more than willing to help people do research, I actually do, I agree with you, I would love more time to do research on some of this stuff myself. But I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
I too, got several emails. And the first thing is, when can we get that information about what we spent on attorney? That seems like a real easy thing to take care of, and we should, and just get it out of the way. It's, I'm sure it's, people have got a reason for why they want to do that, and hold my ears, because I know that's going to be a problem. The other thing that troubles me is people say that they're speaking for people, for everybody, and let me give you a number that I think is right, but I could be wrong. Thirty-four percent, thirty-four, 24% of the people, all those people to vote, voted for that recall. That's not very good, and it's not very impressive. And I hope we stop using that, because we don't work, you know, there's another 2,000 people right across the way here that we're not speaking for, and I think we should. Anyway, that's what I've got.
So, yeah, first, everyone did get a packet of the breakdown, check register legal fees in their boxes. So that was, that was what you got in your box.
It was only for one month, we talked to Mike.
And I think that'll be expanded, right?
No, but I wanted to explain, we actually resolved it, so I just thought I would tell you.
Okay.
Um, Mike, Rachel and I met before the meeting, and he's explained to us how, because all we were seeing, we didn't see the breakdown, so he's going to give us the whole year now? He only gave us one month.
August, December.
Oh, August, December. No, we didn't have the whole year.
Okay, I haven't had him to go through the package, I didn't.
And we didn't know what to look for, so he showed us what to look for, because we didn't, we don't know the names of the firms.
Right, okay.
So we don't know how to find the information.
Okay.
And we also didn't realize, because at the last meeting, I asked him to provide it to us, and he didn't tell us that we have to fill out a records request, public records request.
Right.
He's saying that we have to fill that out, but we didn't know that because we weren't told.
Well, unless the council asks for that information.
As a body, right, yeah.
Since, brought up several times.
So do I have to make a motion from all of us?
No, I think, we've already, we've already discussed it, and he's going to provide for 12 months.
So what I'm pulling back, I just want to be clear, is public record on the financials and the check registers, which is exactly what you have, and then you just need to go through those check registers and find the, where it says general legal service, that will tell you exactly what we spent on legal service for that month, and that should identify it.
I just would, I just would also like to see, like, okay, we spent that much during that month, but.
For which, and.
Where, like, where did it go?
Yeah, so I mean, and I've repeatedly said that each one of these litigation things costs us anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000. You know, every time that we get slapped with a suit, it's going to cost us $20,000 to $30,000 on generals. We've been sued four times by Mike Meyer, three by Carl Swanson, and now one by Sanders. So, in that, one, seven, seven. The general consensus of what this is costing us.
And I hope it's okay to just say this, the only redress that the voters have to show their.
Their discomfort with something is to either do a call or vote, or to go to court. Unfortunately, in my opinion, our charter not, does not have an adequate remedy, absent those two options. And maybe that's something the charter community should think about, maybe there should be a mediation clause beforehand, or something like that, that would be a good resolution, step to resolve things, but right now, those are the only remedies. And those are remedies that are afforded under our U.S. Constitution. To call people out by name and to try to almost ridicule them, like they're the ones costing the city money, I think could be almost defamatory in a sense, and I would be cautious about how we say that going forward, because they have the right to do it, and you're not explaining right now, in an open meeting, why they're bringing these causes of action, and if they have legitimacy. In the last writ that was brought before Judge Irwin, that was decided on November 12th, for example, the judge ruled against the city and said that our position was ridiculous and unconstitutional. Now, you may not agree with that, but from my side of the bench.
That looks like it was a legitimate claim.
I just want to caution us in how.
We caught that.
And I think in addition to that, the concern is, okay, you said that there were multiple by a couple different people. So what happens if a community member who doesn't have the means to take the city to court has a grievance? Like, they don't, they don't have any course of action. The only thing that the community can do is come talk to us in the council meetings, and if we don't listen, that's the only recourse. So I think it's wasting a lot of people, a lot of money, when we could just try to listen.
And we can try to redo, if we do make a mistake, we don't have to be arrogant and fight it in court, we can just capitulate and say, okay, you say tomato, we say tomato, we'll just suck the 35 days over again, and we'll avoid a lawsuit.
Two more questions.
We have, we have options.
Okay, we've gone, we hope this has gone through, it's.
I can hear you, I have a different, sorry, I have a different question related to legal fees. What would be the appropriate timeline that I should expect to use? Yeah. I mean, when should I check in?
Well, I've just been taking a bit of time, because we have a million and one other things, I'm not here next week, because I'm at a conference, so, you know, I'm probably looking at, are you trying to work section time, and?
Well, I mean, you presented these like today.
No, we've been working on them for a few weeks. Here, I was putting things together, pulling those data things together.
That was not inspiration that was relayed to me, so, I mean, just like a general timeline.
Yeah, do you remember when you emailed me? For a particular reason?
I do.
We've been working on them prior to that, and since you got back.
So, a week?
A week.
I will check in in a couple weeks. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I guess really, the only thing I have to report, we went to the LOC City Day two, three, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, I think, and met with some senators and some representatives, had some good discussion with some other fellow counselors at the conference, so that was good. And that's really all I have on the agenda, adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion?
Right. All right, and now we're going to go into executive session. So the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of consultant counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. For each subject to be discussed, it should mirror the language of the executive session is held pursuant to, I already read that one. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made with this executive session. Does everyone, I mean.
I'm going to be clicking around.
Do we need to shut that off?
Yeah, yeah, we'll kill all of that, yeah.
Yep.
Am I allowed to take a quick break?
Yeah, we're going to do five minutes.